It is six o'clock on Monday, September eighteenth. We are the select board, Rutland Select Board meeting in the basement of the Rutland Public Library. We are, there are four members of us here right now. The fifth member may or may not be joining on Zoom or in person at some point throughout the discussion or throughout the evening. We are obviously on Zoom. We're being televised, recorded for live television now on local access, as well as re-airing on local access and YouTube and all of the good stuff. If we can start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving into our agenda, we have minutes, treasury warrant and payroll. So I would take a motion to approve treasury warrant.
Make a motion to approve treasury warrant twenty-four dash six and payroll twenty-four dash PW six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns, Austin, anything that we need to be aware of?
No, not this time. Not yet.
Hearing none, I'll take a roll call. Harry?
Second, aye.
That's aye, appro, with the exception of cable activities.
Yell, aye, excluding safe place?
White, aye. Jen's not on, Jen, you're not on Zoom yet, right?
Should be late.
I knew, I wasn't sure if with the weather she was changing. Um, moving into the approval of meeting minutes, we have two sets of minutes. If there's, if the boards do not have any concerns about the executive session minute meetings, meeting minutes, we can approve those tonight. And then we have our regular September sixth meeting as well.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes, September sixth, two thousand twenty-three, as well as executive session minutes, September sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second motion.
The executive session, yeah, to not release. Thank you for that.
No discussion.
No discussion, everybody's good?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
All right, roll call, Harry?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye. You have an aye?
White, man, aye. Thank you. Um, thank you, Jen and Tamika for those minutes as well. Um, I'll keep my, um, kind of opening remarks brief. I wanted to congratulate the Congregational Church on their three hundredth anniversary. I think they had their three hundredth service yesterday. The town is full of longtime members of the church. And I was just sitting here with Paul looking through the list and it's amazing. What a, what an awesome accomplishment and awesome piece of history for town. Um, and they still play such a vital part of, of town and the dreams and happenings. So thank you and congratulations. School's back in session. I think things have been going fairly well. Rutland didn't suffer the flooding like the, our neighbors in Princeton and Leominster did. So we're fortunate there. Obviously, the weather is still kind of torturing us some, so keep an eye out on your neighbors. If there's any, uh, you have any road wash outs or road concerns or anything, please kindly reach out to our office, Tamika, Austin, or DPW, so that we can try to keep a list of, of what's going on and know that we can't keep eyes everywhere, so we need to hear from you as well. So, any, the boards members have any other, um, comments or? Moving into public comment, we have a full house tonight. I think a lot of this is probably for some of our, um, uh, public hearing discussion, but is there anything for, uh, public comment not relating to our agenda items?
Dick Williams, overlook. Just to let you know, DCR did come down with a final. Our Way River Advisory Committee will be voting on it coming up at our next meeting. Please take a look at it, not the whole thing, but, um, there was more miles open for, but not everything is going to be open. So, and Comet Pond is open for cross lakes swimming and things like that. But, uh, things are going to be held back on Long Pond, just to let you know.
Is there, thank you, Dick, for bringing that up because I think we had our bylaw subcom, uh, bylaw joint meeting the night that Way River Watershed had their DCR meeting. Is there a possibility that we can get a link to the report and put it on?
I will send it to Tamika.
I think Austin said he has it, so if anybody that's here listening will try to get that on the website. So anyone that's interested in taking a look at it and following up with Way River Watershed Advisory Committee, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Dick.
Through the chair?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Williams, is there a date for final comment on that?
I would say within the next two to three weeks, please.
Okay.
We're gonna try to have our meeting, you know, fairly soon.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Thanks, Dick. Uh, hearing none, we have two public hearings scheduled. The first one is for six o'clock. It's a license to store flammables, um, so I will open the meeting. It's a license to store flammables, seventy-nine through eighty-one Main Street, which is, uh, Rutland Plaza down here, um, near the, um, Family Farms and, uh, CrossFit and everything. So, sure, go ahead.
I'm just here representing, uh, the propane company, Austin Propane, that's all.
Oh, so, man, how are you?
Is it Nick?
I'm Matthew, I'm the owner of the company. Nick's our engineer.
Okay.
How you doing? I'm Matthew. I own, uh, Mastery Holdings Company, uh, where just, uh, have a generator that's going in and we need the approval for the propane to get it to work, given if we ever lose power, that's all.
And if I meant, if I understand correctly, Seth, this is kind of, um, through the fire department and everything licensing and everything, or, um, permitting, we're the licensees, but...
Yes, so the board of selectmen licenses the location in the vessel. Permitting for the propane will be through the fire department and issued through us.
And this is a large above-ground tank, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
Without the, um, without natural gas through, through town, this is the only other way to achieve this.
Um, does the board have any questions or, um, concerns or anything?
Through the chair, chief, no, no issues, no?
No concerns.
No concerns?
No concerns.
I'm good. The chief's okay with it, I'm okay.
Um, oh, go ahead.
Uh, where exactly will this be located?
Right next to the existing tanks in the rear of the building now.
In the back there?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And it, they'll be secure, I mean, secured as far as, I assume that there may be additional traffic and everything going in and out, not necessarily public traffic, but transportation traffic or not, that it's?
Not a concern.
Okay. Does anyone from the public have any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? Is the board comfortable moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Then I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Right, we close it and then take the vote, right? Yes.
I motion, I make a motion to close the public hearing on the propane gas.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, roll call, Harry, to close the hearing.
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye. Yell, aye.
White, man, aye. Then I would take a motion to approve the license to store the flammables at Rutland Market, Market Plaza.
Make a motion to approve the propane, uh, store the flam, license to approve the store flammables at seventy-nine through eighty-one Main Street, Rutland Plaza, Inc.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Did I say all right?
No. HB four beauty.
Next time I'll kick you.
Motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Harry?
Second, aye.
Matt's an aye.
Yell, aye.
White, man, aye. Thank you, guys, and thank you, Seth, for all the work that you've been doing to, to make sure that we're good to go. Appreciate it. Moving forward, we have the, um, at six-ten, it is just six-ten, uh, public hearing for, to con, it's a continuation of the notice of intent to sell chapter land, Carol Viner Emerald Road, parcel four, map thirty-four B. This was continued from our August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Um, so I will open the, the public hearing. And I think we've been in receipt throughout the day of a lot of, um, feedback from local residents, local to Emerald Road. We have received a presentation, I think, from AGCOM that came in, um, late. And I think we have some AGCOM members here. I'm not sure if they wanted to briefly go through the presentation, if our board has had a chance to look at it or not. And we had some questions asked by, um, member Ledger who's not here tonight, and we got some feedback, and Becky did a lot of, um, diligent work also to try to answer some of the finding questions. So, um, is the board, Kate, did you guys want to do the act, go through the presentat? It's, I know it's fourteen slides, so I was hoping to kind of keep it short if, if you wanted to go through it briefly, um, because I don't know that we've all had the opportunity to see it. It just came in late this afternoon, I don't.
I was about to.
Okay, okay.
I was told, is there a company?
Okay. Here.
Sure, I need to.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, actually, if you don't mind, you mind if I operate from here? Right there, okay. All right. Um, so, good evening, everybody. Thank you. My name is Kate Gervais and I'm here on behalf of the, uh, Town of Rutland Agricultural Commission. Uh, we have met several times in regards to, uh, this, um, this, I'll call it a project. So the town has the right of first refusal on any land that comes out of chapter sixty-one programs. Uh, in, this is a tax incentive program for farmers to keep their land in, uh, open and in active agricultural use. So this land is being, currently those are purchase and sale, uh, in progress for this land as well as, um, an additional piece of land on Emerald Road that, uh, is owned by the Viner property. Okay, so quickly, the, the piece of, uh, land that we have that, as a town, uh, that we have the first right of refusal on is sixteen acres. The other piece that's going to potentially come up for sale is thirty-seven acres. Uh, it's on Emerald Road, the corner by Welchav. The open field on that has been farmed continuously for almost thirty years. Uh, if you're familiar with the area, I'm just gonna buzz through this really quickly. It's not heavily, uh, developed. Everybody over there has drilled wells, on-site sewage disposal, so that's, um, a concern about developing this, uh, this parcel. Uh, it's also directly upland of Turkey Hill Pond, uh, there's a large wetland complex over there. And this property is actually less than a thousand yards from open water. So, um, just environmental impacts that we want to think about. And I should note, sorry, I'm very familiar with this, so I want to make sure that everybody has the background information that, that we have. This is, uh, the purchase and sale is for this project, for this property to be developed, um, into homes, residential development. Um, so Emerald Road, Welch Road, uh, yeah, Irish, all these roads in the area. They're difficult to navigate. They are in a current state of disrepair with current levels of traffic. There's local concern about the, the, um, development causing further issues with the roads. We all know what that's like around town. And as you can see by the number of people in this room, there is a very strong local desire to see this land remain open and conserved rather than being developed. So, we all know this, but I'm gonna reiterate it. Protection of water resources, other natural resources, extremely important in town, providing open spaces and parks. We're not an urban community, but we still need those spaces. Uh, creating, enhancing outdoor recreation opportunities, preserving working farms and forests and protecting wildlife habitat. The thing that is really key to remember is that once this habitat is gone, we cannot recreate it. Um, and that's from EOEEA. Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So continued, uh, just topics that came up in our meetings, um, increased property values for surrounding homes, uh, and little to no cost to town services. If this land remains open, uh, it really doesn't cost us much. Uh, and finally, the, the biggest point that I want to hit home today, um, is that the master plan makes open space a priority. Land use goal number five is to preserve open space and encourage use for active and passive recreation. That is from the twenty-twenty-three master plan that, uh, will be released forthcoming very soon. Okay, so this land can be used, if it's not developed for residential use, can be, continue to be used for agriculture. There, in the, uh, adjacent parcel, there is a possibility for, uh, timber harvest, uh, passive recreation, walking, hiking, hunting, or watching, all those wonderful things, wildlife habitat. So this piece actually provides connectivity to other parcels that are protected in the area. This promotes greater biodiversity in town. Uh, we want to see these, uh, critters also have a home among us. All right. Um, could be used as a community garden, there, like I said, there's an open field. And likewise recreational fields, I know we're always looking for spaces for those. Um, once the li, this land is developed, these opportunities are gone. So included this, uh, just needs a, a little bit of explanation. This is called a cost of community service study. This is from American Farmland Trust. I can get you the date of it, but, um, the, the one thing that this slide really hits home on is, so the cost of community service is a ratio of, um, tax revenue generated to cost to the town. And you'll notice that, uh, residential, the, uh, revenue to expenditure is always greater than one. That means for every dollar that this town collects in residential taxes, greater than one dollar is spent on those parcels. Okay, so residential development is generally, uh, not going to work in our favor financially. Physically, it's a, a much more sound, long-term decision to keep this, this space open. Again, I, I hate to even bring this up, but it can generally almost always be developed in the future. But once it's developed, we cannot undevelop it. Um, so for right now, if you look at the, uh, right-hand column, that is the, the, uh, revenue to expenditure ratio. So for every dollar in taxes that's collected from working open land, let's see, let's say, let's even pick Southborough, let's be optimistic. Um, so forty-five cents is spent for each dollar that's collected. So this, not only will this land, uh, not cost us, uh, but in, I, I know we'll be missing out on, uh, residential tax revenue, uh, but the, the costs are also not there because nobody's living on it and there's no services. Um, just a reminder that, uh, this was from two thousand nineteen at our annual town meeting. Passed a growth management bylaw. The town is saying very clearly, we do not want residential development when we have the option. So I'm happy to share that link with anybody that needs it, but just a reminder. So how do we accomplish this? I know it's controversial, but we do have some money from the proceeds of Rutland Heights. This is for capital purchases. This would be a capital purchase. We also have an, uh, open space preservation fund and an ag preservation fund in town. I think those are currently very un, underutilized, unutilized, really. So those are our in-town options. We can also collaborate with, uh, we've reached out to East Quabon Land Trust. Uh, there are other local land trusts in the area. There are also, uh, state grants. There's a, a land grant, local acquisition for natural diversity. The state, uh, should we apply for this grant, will reimburse the town sixty-six percent of the cost of this land. Um, so the sixteen acres is being sold for four hundred thousand dollars. So the ultimate cost of this town, should we apply for this grant and get it, would be, um, somewhere in the ballpark of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Couple of other grant opportunities, there's also, uh, the option to put a permanent conservation restriction or an agricultural preservation restriction on this. And all of these come with, uh, associated pockets of money to help the town keep this land open and, and make sure that it's a, um, a viable option. All right, so, um, just quickly, uh, this is from, so our, the AGCOM meetings had, uh, a lot of, um, involvement from neighbors, residents in the area, um, and other townspeople. So I pulled this again from the master plan, so Rutland, uh, you can hit the next slide, we'll just go through these. This is from the Town of Rutland's vis, uh, vision statement, the master plan. So Rutland is where we respect the past while being focused on our future. Uh, these are all pictures of this property. Go ahead. Uh, Rutland is where everyone can enjoy the lush rural landscapes and natural beauty of our town.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
Looking at those animals.
Yeah, I know, they're, they're really cool pictures. It's where we seek sustainable growth that protects our natural, historic and agricultural resources while preserving our values, qualities and culture. And Rutland is where life is more enjoyable and peaceful, serene and a whole lot friendlier. And I think directly from the master plan, where the data was taken from, um, surveys of townspeople, I think it's very, very clear that Rutland wants to keep this space open, usable to the public, uh, just, yeah. Um, I will, I'm happy to answer questions, um, and I know that there are a few other folks from the area that, um, are interested in commenting as well.
Thanks, Kate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I hope that wasn't too crazy.
No, probably.
No, it wasn't.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead, man.
As the ag committee, have you looked at other properties for sale in Rutland?
Uh, so the, as a ag commission, we don't have an actual say in the chapter sixty-one process. The board of selectmen is the acting, um, agent on that. So we don't, we're not shopping for property right now. Um, we were asked to give a say, uh, when it came to the chapter sixty-one land that came up for, for sale. So we, we did this with the Zotteli property that came up, um, earlier this year. Um, and we know that there are other properties in the pipeline. And, and I understand, um, one thing that I did want to say is, you know, I know this might not seem like the ideal purchase, but if we wait around for the ideal purchase, all of the land is gonna be on. And when I say it, I don't mean it's, it's the ideal purchase. I mean, I understand where Rutland is fiscally and.
The reason I ask is from a financial standpoint. This property, and the gentleman made a comment at the last meeting that we can buy this for twenty-five thousand an acre, which is pretty cheap. But there's another piece of property available which we can buy for eight thousand dollars an acre.
I'm not familiar with that one.
Further price, so, I'm, I'm curious as to why you haven't looked at something that is two-thirds cheaper for the land
Yep.
and it's more land available.
That's, that's a, that's a very good question.
I think, if I, if I may, I think the process for the, this is the first right of refusal through the sixty-one A process. The other sixty-one, I'm not aware of any other sixty-one A, they took it off the market, property that has come through the board, um, through the process and.
There has to be an offer made first, right?
Correct, but the, the, um, the parcel that Harry's referring to, they've opted to take it off the market. But it recently, yeah, it recently was on the market. But they would have to have a purchase and sale agreement before it would come to the town for right of first refusal.
So this is one thing to say about the, the chapter sixty-one A B process, is that each parcel is, is different. We have received advice from, uh, a local attorney who's very, very good. This is basically all the work she does, and she says every single case has to be handled on its own. There really is not a huge comparison, um, between these types of projects. Um, I'm not familiar with the, the land that, that you were speaking of.
If I meant, I think the town is not going out looking for parcels of land to purchase. I think this, we're talking about this specific parcel because it's coming through the sixty-one process. And so it's not that we're going around town looking for parcels of land that may be on the market that we don't have, uh, a site in. This is because there's tax savings to the property owners having it in the sixty-one A and as a, an op, an avenue for it to come out in the town to have an option to, to move on the land. That it's the sixty-one process.
I understand that, but fiscal, fiscally, I just asked if there was something out there that was cheaper and the tax would be benefit we had, would, had they looked at that? Because part of what we're trying to do is the select board, looking into the future, is this the right piece of property to buy with what's out there? Is this the best use of our town dollars since we just passed two and a half? That was my question.
Sure.
Fiscally,
Yep.
is this the right piece of property to buy?
Sure, I understand.
Through the chair, so this is the sixteen acres and what's the number of value on it now? What are they?
Uh, four hundred.
So that's four hundred. And then there's?
Thirty-seven available, um, but there is a purchase and sale in effect right now for two hundred thousand dollars for that thirty-seven acres.
Oh, because that's mostly wet, right?
Correct, yeah, and it's not cleared.
Then it's not cleared, so two hundred fifty?
Uh, two hundred.
Two hundred.
Yeah. And that's not, that piece is not necessarily available to us right now, but it, um, the possibility is there.
And who farms this now?
Uh, Randy.
And what do you pay to farm that?
Nothing.
Okay, so I'm just trying to think, oops, just trying to think as far as investment. I mean, four hundred thousand dollars for sixteen acres to leave empty? Because this is what people have said to me. So how do I, how do you want me to tell them that this is a good investment?
I understand, so, so basically it's a comparison of, of your alternatives. You know, there's, there's a huge push locally, those neighbors, they really want to see it, um, left open. They don't want to see it developed. And like I said, this, this land has essentially no commercial value. So if it's going to cost the town more in services to have it developed residentially than it would be to, to leave it open?
No, absolutely. Listen, this town has been overdeveloped. I don't think anyone would argue that. But that's been going on for fifty years. This is a residential town that has no commercial. We've been talking about this for a long time. Rutland has a very unique situation. My only concern is we do have a little bit of money now that the town has showed faith in us to, to give us through the two and a half. And it's just very hard for me, although I, I respect all you, I get it. This is your neighborhood, I understand it, and, and that area is a nightmare as far as roads getting in and out. It's a nightmare because we looked at it for recreational fields and just bringing that much traffic into that area just doesn't make any sense. We have talked about it, I want everybody to know, we have spoken about, this isn't,
I think, yeah.
But I'm trying to think, four hundred thousand dollars for something to sit is a very hard sell.
Well, maybe to you, yeah.
No, I, I get it, it's personal with you, and I totally understand it, I believe me, I get it.
Right, right. I think one of the biggest things that I want to hit home is that master plan, that, that the town is saying this is important to us.
Absolutely.
Um, and, and that, that, you know, I don't think.
I mean, we're looking at managed growth, we're gonna try to put some things out there for the town to vote on. The last time there was an acreage minimum and the town voted it down. So it's strange, it's hard to get people to show up and get all on board with. And in the meantime, the last fifty years, we're a residential community, we're not a farm community anymore. I know that hurts for some people to hear, but we're a residential community with some farms.
And people come here for that rural character.
Absolutely, that's why I came here, absolutely, a hundred percent, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And, and, you know, the town is telling the board of selectmen essentially, um, you know, and the powers that be to act on opportunities like this because we can't afford to bring more houses into town.
Are you, are you aware, uh, that there is a permit limit on the number of houses that can be built under the managed growth?
I'm somewhat familiar with it personally.
So we know that we've limited the number of houses that can be built through the permit process. It sounds like you're pushing for a lower limit of permits or a stop in building?
I'm not pushing for any of that, I'm pushing to have the town buy this piece of land.
Okay.
I think, if I, if I may, I think my struggle is that I was on master plan and we heard it was, public outreach was done a few times through surveys, through in-person meetings. It was not just a, a, a piecemeal here, there, you know, from select pockets of people. We really tried to engage the, the community as a whole. And we heard, to Kate's point, that, that preserving open space is a high priority. And also that we historically don't fund ourselves well. And so my struggle is, we have a little bit of money. We know we have a whole lot of infr, infrastructure that has been neglected, probably not done initially the way it should have been for the growth that would, was foreseen and that we've neglected it since it was done. So we have multimillion dollars worth of infrastructure work to be done. And also adding potentially sixteen houses in this location does not help that infrastructure either. But it's a chunk of change that could be utilized to go towards infrastructure that currently needs. So I feel like it's, no matter what, we're biting the hand that feeds us. Um, and I think your analysis of, with the information that you provided as far as residential housing is not, it's all new growth money and everything, but it's, it's a wash. We're gonna lose it in what we owe to the schools, it's, it's cost of being a residential town. And we see that periodically when we need to readjust with the two and a half or something. That, that the tax income does not, the residential tax income does not equate to the, the cost of, of houses. Um, we know that that area is going to most likely need infrastructure repairs, whether it's upgrading, whether it's on road, roadways, um, or electric, or, um, it's all, that would all be well and septic, I think. So, it's not water and sewer infrastructure out there, but it's additional, um, wear and tear on the roads. And, and I think electricity out at that end of town is not the, the best. So, um, I look at that and say yes, and then I look at the four hundred thousand dollars, almost half a million dollars, and think that that's a chunk of change that could be invested in existing infrastructure that is significantly deteriorating also. And so, that's where I, my struggle is.
Sure, can I over, um, just two points, if you?
First off, I give you a lot of credit for standing up here and taking our questions, okay? It takes a lot, let me tell you. So, I really appreciate the fact that you're doing that. The, the, the hard part for me is this, we're looking at buying open land, which basically keeps it nice, we keep the bunnies there, we keep the traffic down, we got a lot of, you know, I like to see the eagles come in and take the bunnies for lunch and that type of thing, you know? But, but. If we, we have so much recreation area in this town, which is, I'll use the word pathetic in terms of what it is. We could take that four hundred thousand and create usable recreation land for here instead of having it sit there for years.
That's fair, I, you know, I. I looked at the, the Glenwood Fields, you know, that they pushed against the, um, you know, agriculture over there and um, there's no soccer field there.
The other thing is, is unless we assign this land to a specific commu- to a specific committee, mass general law does not allow for agricultural in this, it has to be set up for public dis- uh, access. Agricultural land doesn't allow public access. If you're farming it, you can't say that this is gonna go to a soccer field or this is gonna go to a baseball field.
Fair.
And that's the other issue we have, so if, if we do that, where do we assign the land to? That we could, and it's, and it's an out for a lot more than free.
Fair, fair. Uh, okay, so, um, there were two points that I wanted to make. One point about the, um, the cost of, of residential development is that that cost does not go away. You know, the, the family of four moves in, their, their kids go through town, they cost us, they, everybody goes to college, they retire, they leave. The next family comes in and continues that cost. Uh, this land, you know, if it's, if it remains open, once it's paid off, I understand we're not, if the town owns it, we're not bringing in tax money on it, however, the, it doesn't continue to cost us. Um, and then there was one.
Uh, can I start? Why wouldn't it continue to cost us if we're not collecting?
I'm, I'm, I apologize, it's not that it wouldn't continue to cost us, the costs would not be comparable to what they would be were it residential. It shouldn't be, uh, hyperbolic.
Thank you.
There was another point that I wanted to make, and it left my head.
So, I see some members in the audience, um, I'll start with attorney and then, uh, cause I've seen her hand up a few times, and then I'll move over, if that's okay?
Thank you ma'am, uh, attorney Janine Moran, I represent Carol Viner, the seller. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to just reiterate, um, I spoke about it last time at the last meeting. Um, but I wanted to just address to our ad com, um, representative. I wanna make sure everyone understands, we're looking at seven lots here, this is not a massive development. Um, and from my client's perspective as the seller, I mean, from her end, I mean, I guess she's made whole either way. So, you know, she's getting the four hundred thousand dollars whether, uh, a developer purchases it or whether the town does. But from a practical standpoint, what I'm struggling with, and I think of the members of the select board mentioned it, is how do you justify a town that does have, um, some financial constraints putting four hundred thousand dollars into a piece of land that's basically in the middle of nowhere? Um, and letting it sit when you don't really have a plan for what you're going to do with it? And it may just sit there for years. Um, I, I'm just again, struggling with it as like a pragmatic issue. And again, you know, from my client's point of view, it probably doesn't matter to her either way, because she's getting these kind of amount of money. But, you know, we are looking at a builder who has put money, time and effort into developing this land. And, uh, we're having, you know, an op- an opportunity for seven lots to be developed and have families move in. And again, it's not a, a massive development that we've seen in this town in the past years. Twenty, fifty, hundred units, I mean, it's, it's a small development. So, I, I'm definitely struggling with looking at, is it fiscally responsible, you know, responsible to take four hundred thousand dollars out of your budget and put it onto a piece of land that you may not do anything with?
And that's a fair question.
Make more sense to take the four hundred thousand dollars or whatever money you already have in your account and use it to develop or renovate or improve something you already own as a town?
That costs you more money in the long run.
Sure, so.
So, hold on, Harry, could, do you mind if I let a resident, they, they've had their.
No, I, I just wanted to ask the attorney.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, what happens with the, uh, Ms. Viner property? If we don't, cause I understand the builder is purchasing all the fifty-four acres, whatever it is?
Yes, sir.
What happens to the remaining acreage if he doesn't get his sixteen?
I believe she's going to, to keep it, our, our transactions are contingent on one another. So, at this point, if this transaction is terminated, meaning seller and builder, because the town decides to exercise their right, then at this point, I believe Ms. Viner will retain the, the remaining land. What she does with it in the future, I, I can't say, but I believe that's, um, how things will unfold for this transaction. Certainly, she could sell it in the future to somebody else. But, um, as you know, I mean, that part of the land is much less desirable to anybody looking at building it based on the wetlands and not having it cleared, et cetera. But that is where things stand as of now, the transaction would be terminated altogether. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't been good about it, thank you, speaker. If, before you speak, if you can just give your name and address, that way for admin, it's a record, public record, please.
Diane Derrick on Emerald Road. From what I understand, there's a possibility if we go the land grant, that you could get the contin- contiguous land. So, if you look at the fifty-three acres at six hundred, or possibly Mrs. Viner could.
Two hundred for the other.
Well, four hundred and two, but if you look at the whole thing at six hundred divided by fifty-three, you're looking at eleven thousand-ish an acre. And when we're looking at the opportunity to work with the land grants and paying the town back and thinking that you could get, whether it's sixteen or fifty-three for a cost of a hundred and thirty-five because we're gonna be able to get you re- the town reimbursed, it, it te- tends to make a lot more financial sense to support the open consensus that everybody, once it's gone, it's gone. So, financially, it can be looked at a lot differently than just four hundred thousand for sixteen acres. Because the other thirty-six acres is still very important and could be walking trails or whatever, the historical value, we all know that. So, and the land grant, the way I understand it, offers up the opportunity to put that all in one and apply for that. So, if you look at it that way, if it's sixty-six percent, uh, reimbursement from a land grant, the town for fifty-three acres, the cost could be two hundred thousand at the most, because, and there could be other ways to, to reduce that amount. We just, I guess, for me, it's to release it now and just let a sale go through without being able to look at every possibility that would preserve it just seems premature and does not support the residential, I, I say residential slash agricultural feeling of this town.
Through the chair, Ms., we have been looking at it, I mean, we only have a very small amount of time. And the problem is, and I hate to be so, uh, you got, it's emotional for all of you, this is your neighborhood, I respect that, I understand that. But Rutland needs money. We don't need another wa- this is just my opinion, a walking trail sounds wonderful. But a walking trail's not gonna make us any money, and if, if we don't, you know, that, we have a little bit of money to spend now. We have some ideas of developing some things in town to bring in income. So, again, I respect all you people for coming in here, I understand it's an emotional thing for you. But we have to represent the whole town, and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for a walking trail, the majority of town's not gonna be okay with that.
I'd like to be able to find that out, and if you do, uh, uh, if it goes to town, wouldn't it go to a town vote? I think last meeting, it would go to a town vote.
No, this is, we have a window of, don't we have a window of time?
First, first the window of opportunity after the first refusal.
And then we would figure out.
Twenty days, that's barring to a very.
And then that's, it's really.
Close end.
So, that would go in front of a town vote, so, in other words, you're saying that how can you justify it? Well, let's bring it to the vote, let's bring it to the town people. Let's ask them, let's ask them to vote and show up as they did in May of twenty nineteen.
I think.
I ju- I just wanna thank you for telling me about the grant, luckily, I was able to do a little bit of research. We are currently not eligible for either of the grants right now.
The, the grant period is closed, you.
Well, that's not why.
Okay.
Not only is the grant period closed, but we also need an updated and active open space and recreation plan. We have one from twenty seventeen that's expired, so you neither, neither, either need to have an active one or a draft one that was submitted to the executive office, which we have neither. I know, it's my understanding, they're working on updating the plan, but we do not have an active one now, thus, we're not eligible for that sixty-six percent at the moment.
To be fair to that point, of, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, um, the, the, uh, window of application for that grant, uh, our application will not be due until July of twenty-four. I forget what year this is, um, so there is that period of time. Um, and then, um, to Diane's point, that was the part that left my head, was there are opportunities, you know, this would cost the town four hundred dolla- four hundred thousand dollars upfront, and then we would be able to recoup some of that. Again, there are partnerships available. All of these are maybes, all of these are maybes. But one thing we know is that residential development's not gonna bring us any money.
I mean, I think one of, one of the charge of the select board is to look at the entirety of town as a whole and taking into consideration everything, taking into consideration finances, master plan, the wishes of the, the very local impacted residents as well as the, the more broad entirety of town. And I sit here and I, and I can get emotional about it, because I'm a big believer in preserving open space and conservation and everything. And also, I know where we were six months ago, sitting here thinking we were gonna have to close down buildings and lay off our staff because we didn't have the money. And we were fortunate that you all supported us in the two and a half override. And now, to say that this is a, that this is a, more of a priority and some, some, it can be looked at as a more of a priority than doing the maintenance to the buildings, um, the infrastructure that we already have, to providing services to the entirety of town. Um, and, and this is where I really struggle, because I know what the cost of single-family houses are going to be i- in the here and now and in the long term. And I'm really struggling with saying that we have, that I'm comfortable saying that we have that four hundred thousand dollars and that that sets a precedent then for quite a, 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 a chunk of money per acreage to the public that we're willing to spend, um, to land coming out. And I think that, that we have to be mindful of, of a lot of, of pieces that are going into this. And it's, it's, I understand it's, it's your land and it's in your backyards. And, and I understand that one hundred percent, and I'm trying to reckon with how we can as a board, say that this is of the best interest for the entirety of town for the money that is being asked.
Can just, can I just add one more thing? We can't go retro for this grant either, if it's already owned by the time the grant period's open, we're not eligible for the grant, and that's in the document as well.
One, one other point for putting out the four hundred, isn't it an option? If you were to transfer, the town would transfer their right of refusal to the, uh, East Quabon Land Trust, that they would bridge the loan. So, it's not like you would ha- the town would have to come, come up with the four hundred thousand. Again, we would need time to work that all out to say they can bridge the loan, we can get the grants, we can pay them back. It's just, all the questions just aren't answered yet to let this opportunity go, hopefully. Because there are still opportunities, fiscally, we get, you understand how we feel, we understand your responsibility to the town and everybody understands fiscal responsibility. But there's a way to recoup some of this possibly, and until we all, and we've worked so, we've worked hard on it, we're willing to continue to work hard on it to come up to the options. We also understand there's a hundred and twenty days, as, as the attorney just pointed out, Mrs. Viner will get her money one way or the other, uh, and, and respectfully should, of course, nobody wants to stand in the way of that. But to, to not explo- have the time, since we do have a hundred and twenty days and we've had a lot of footwork and there's more to do, it would seem premature to just shut it down now and release it for sale.
Uh, just, can I ask Tamika to speak a little bit about some of the due diligence that we did do, especially, I don't know, it's been, was it July? Uh, since this first came, uh, the board asked us to reach out to several organizations in the regional community and, uh, Tamika can speak on those efforts.
Uh, yes, so initially, I reached out to DCR, um, and they were not interested in the property. Um, I reached out to four local land organizations, um, two of which I heard back from, which was White Oak and the Greater Worcester Land Trust, and neither of them were, uh, financially able to do it unless the town were to help contribute paying for it. Um, the other two, I did not hear back from. Um, so, we've definitely done our due diligence as far as reaching out to those organizations that, that may be interested. Um, but I think it's really important to note that, that there's a certain process under MGL that has to be followed. And so, if the town, the town can't, um, just arbitrarily waive its right to a, a maybe organization, like there would have to be an agreement in place where this organization would then be purchasing it for the purchase price that was asked by the one hundred and twentieth day. That would have to be, uh, what would happen. Um, and if the town, if the board were to exercise their right of first refusal, um, and it went to the town meeting for appropriation, we would have to have town meeting approval and proof of funds by the one hundred and twentieth day. And our town meeting is not, um, you know, proposed to be held until November sixteenth. So, with all due respect to what, you know, Mrs. Derrick is saying, I, I think we've, we've done all of the research that we possibly can and reached out to those that we, we can, we've worked with Becky to talk about, you know, what financial impact it could have with financing various, you know, what the cost to the town would be over and above the four hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm just not certain what additional information we could find in the limited amount of time we have left.
I, I think a lot of it is that there's no solid commitment on the funding piece. You know, we heard that there's, there may be opportunities available, there may, there may be, there may not be. Ultimately, we as a town have to be comfortable saying that we are on the hook for the four hundred thousand that it's gonna take, um, because we don't have any, any solid commitment from anyone. The grant opportunities are by no means a, a guarantee. Um, we don't have CPA in place, there's not a, a bucket of funds. Um, and we know that it's a priority for town, and so, we should start looking at CPA and getting that on. And then that goes and says, everybody's small allocation of tax goes to a fund that can only be used for preservation of historic or open space or, um, recreation and stuff. I just, like, I, like, I'm still struggling, and I see that it's, I struggle that it's four hundred thousand dollars for sixteen acres. If it was the six hundred thousand dollars for the fifty-three acres, then. then I think it might, it's more money, but the value, the cost per acre is a lot less. Also, I think that it sets a precedent then that if we're willing to spend four hundred thousand dollars on sixteen acres, then another parcel coming out may go for at least that, if not more. Um, and then we are just continually to inflate the cost ourse- on ourselves. Kind of like we've done with the sixty-one process here because the reason it's so desirable is because it's been farmed and been able to be maintained in sixty-one A. So we lost the tax revenue side. And now if we wanted to do anything with it, because we offered that tax benefit, it's costing us a lot more.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Uh, the attorney?
Thank you, Sue.
How many days do we have left of that hundred and twenty?
I filed it on July thirty-first. Um, so I believe we are very much nearing the end. And I want to just emphasize to the, the town people that have come out, I greatly appreciate, you know, your coming out and your enthusiasm and passion about this. But this is town meeting number three on this matter. So, you know, whatever the select board decides, that certainly, you know, will honor and respect that decision. But this cannot continue to go on meeting after meeting. This is the third one on this very issue. Um, which, you know, really goes to Tamika's point that the select board has really done a great job of giving the time and doing their due diligence. They didn't just simply, you know, say, oh, well, this is not important. They did a lot of research and, you know, now we're almost at the end of the one twenty. And, you know, I feel like if they don't have a plan in place, if there isn't a plan in place already for the use of the land, it isn't fair to those involved to continue this process. We've got the one twenty days. That's it.
But you filed, you said July thirty-first?
July thirty-first.
So August has thirty days, September has eighteen. We're forty-eight days into the hundred and twenty.
So I think it's, I think it's, we have been through this. I think it's November twenty-eighth. We had been through this when we were before we set this meeting.
So that was built in, the hundred and twenty days. We're in, we're not there yet.
Understood. But, but. But what I'm getting at is we've had three town meetings on it. So.
So what, what's it added?
I'd like to have, listen, guys, listen.
Twenty meetings we've had.
I, guys, listen, I'd like to have less discussion back and forth and, and have it come through us. We're the board that has to make the decision. And I understand that there's a lot of information and there's a lot of feelings and emotions about it. It's, it's an emotional time. And I, and I respect that and I understand that. And I also want to reiterate that the, I, I think the town staff, I'm going to ask if Becky doesn't mind going through some of the options that she looked at as far as ways to, to fund it. Becky, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think you did do some work on it. Um, the town staff has really done a, a lot of work on this. And it wasn't, it's not just a a blanket yes or no on us. We, I think you see all of us sitting up here. Jen, I think is on Zoom and on her way in right now. Um, that we've all been wrestling with this a lot and trying to, to make sure that we are doing what's best for you as well as the entirety of ta- of the other ten thousand residents in town. So if Becky, if you don't mind going through briefly.
The, the information that I provided to you, I mean, I know Tamika has done a lot of work, you know, contacting the land, land trusts and that to try and see what, what other options we have. Um, my piece of it, of course, is the finance part of it. Um, where do we have the money? How are we going to finance it if we did buy it? Um, I did get information from our financial advisors at Unibank. We could borrow, um, which takes a, a, a vote at the, at a special town meeting. Uh, we could borrow the funds, um, four hundred thousand dollars for five years, uh, would about, would be about sixty thousand dollars in interest and thirty-two hundred dollars in, um, issuance costs. It would add about, I mean, I should have put my glasses on. Um, it's add, it would add about seven cents per thousand to everybody's tax rate if we borrowed that. Um, again, that we could have to go through the special town meeting that we would have. I think it's, they're going to vote later on today that, um, this evening that it's, uh, November sixteenth, which would be, would be within the hundred and twenty days. Um, the other, um, another option would be to use the proceeds from the Rutland Heights, um, sale. Um, there's a one point four million in there. Um, the vote, the ta- again, it would have to go to a special town meeting for people to vote on it. Um, and, uh, just to, you can use those funds for anything that you would borrow money for. Um, but again, it's a, it's a finite pool of money, uh, one point four million with all of the infrastructure repairs and, and things that we've neglected for quite some time because of our budget issues, um, that won't go very far. Um, we, we could use ARPA funds. Uh, right now there's only four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars available, um, to be allocated by the Board of Selectmen, um, to use for, um, other projects in town. Um, that, that has not been appropriated at this point. And then there's always, um, stabilization fund. Uh, there's one point one, uh, million in stabilization. Uh, this would, again, would have to go to a special town meeting. Um, and it's not recommended to use stabilization. Stabilization is kind of a rainy day fund for if we had a disaster happen in town like, like in Leominster. Those, that would be something that we would use stabilization funds for. So those are the four options that I immediately could put forward to the board to, as how we could come up with the four hundred thousand if you chose to do that. They're not the best, but, but that's what we have.
One of the things that has to happen, however, this, if the select board decides to do this, is to move the land through the process of being evaluated by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Because they're responsible for looking at major projects that meet certain criteria. Right now, that committee has on its books over twenty million dollars worth of infrastructure needs for this town. That's how far we've gotten behind in how this town works. So keeping that in mind, four hundred thousand may not seem like a lot, but in the scheme of things for this town, that's a lot of money we got to consider.
Name and address, please.
Robert Davis, thirty-three Emerald Road. For, for the board's information, there are seven new houses in that immediate area. One has just been completed. Six are under construction. You want to add another seven, and you're talking about an infrastructure shortage. And all you want to do is have it pass the houses, which will exacerbate the infrastructure shortage. So, I mean, there's seven houses. One was just completed. Six are under construction as we sit here tonight.
Alright, that's right.
And you're talking about adding another seven? He's not going to sit on those and do one a year. So more than a third of the town's quote unquote thirty-six permits per year is already going out to that neighborhood. It's as we speak tonight. All those houses are there. And we're talking like three thousand squi- I was a builder most of my life. We're talking three thousand and above square foot houses. These are big houses on small lots.
I mean, through the chair, yeah, again, we, we hear you and we don't disagree with you. But there has to be some return on investment. We can't afford to spend four hundred thousand dollars for a walking trail. We just can't do it.
People sometimes find alternatives.
We don't have time to find alternatives. That's the point. We have a hundred and twenty days.
I think we have some.
All these grants are maybes. There's, there's no guarantee we'll get a single dime from the government.
So we have someone on Zoom and then I think Jen, I don't know how much you've been able to kind of listen and everything. Um, so we'll go to Zoom. Name an address, please. And then we'll come back to the, the room.
Sure. Darrell McCall, twenty-nine Emerald Road here in Rutland. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, Select Board, for listening tonight. Um, just, just to give you a little background, I was the superintendent of schools here uh, in the Wachusen Regional School District for almost ten years. And, um, I was also a principal of Naqwaog Elementary School and an assistant principal at Central Tree Middle School. During that time, I saw a tremendous amount of growth here in the town of Rutland. Um, you know, I've been here with, uh, my wife Julie and our two, we raised our two kids, um, since nineteen ninety-nine. But I, I understand the concern around, uh, infrastructure. Uh, the in- the infrastructure needs associated with this community are large. But I can tell you the costs associated with putting in more new homes far surpasses anything that we're going to be seeing in terms of infrastructure costs. So every year, and you had Harry, um, when you were on FinCom, we had many conversations just about the costs associated with the school district and why was it so expensive to, uh, educate students? It's very, it's very expensive. Um, but we do a great job educating the kids in our school district. And because of that, people want to move here. But we're very fortunate that we still have open spaces available. We still have space like these fields and, you know, it's, uh, you know, sixteen acre field, but then there eh, the, the woods, fifty to sixty acres of woods, that will become homes. So I know the lawyer said, well, it's, it's, the sales contingent upon that particular, uh, you know, piece of land, the sixteen acres being sold. But if that is sold guaranteed within the next several years, those woods will also become more homes. I can also tell you, two years ago, uh, when we had an assist, uh, um, a temporary town manager and, uh, the former, um, DPW director, they both reached out to me when I was superintendent and asked that buses no longer be allowed to travel on Emerald Road because of the wear and tear associated on the road and how poorly, um, the, the, the roads were taken care of. Um, at the time, the DPW director told me that all they did was basically regrade the road. They never added gravel. It was much too expensive to add gravel. So the, um, you know, the solution that they had at the time was, you know what, let's not allow more buses on the roads. So of course that didn't work. We said no. And, um, you know, we now have, as, you know, my neighbor just said, we have seven more homes, um, being built already. So I can tell you that the infrastructure alone for the roads, um, we had to put a generator in our house because we lose electricity on this end of town quite often. So, um, again, I think all of those things add up to costs associated with new homes, kids in schools that far surpass anything that, um, we're going to be dealing with in terms of infrastructure. It's a, it's a, it's an expensive, um, I understand it's an expensive, um, venture for us, but it's, it's short-term thinking versus long-term planning. And if we start thinking long-term, long-term is investing. Short-term is, hey, let's deal with this right now. But long-term is, let's invest in something that our children will be able to benefit from. People who, um, live here will be able to benefit from, and it doesn't necessarily mean walking trails. It can mean keeping the land from being built upon. Because once it's built upon, as they said earlier, it's, um, there will always be a house and there will be a family there. And in another generation, there will be another family there. So the costs associated with these homes will continue and continue, um, as long as they're there. So thank you.
Yep.
I, I appreciate that, Darrell. It's, I read your email that you sent. Very thoughtful. I appreciate it. In my twenty million plus of capital expenditure, infrastructure, what I didn't mention was the cost of all the roads we have to do. What I did mention was, how much are we looking at in road infrastructure costs on top of that twenty-plus million? Do you have an answer?
I'm punting. Hold on one second.
I think it was twelve fifteen is in my head, but I don't know for sure.
Fifty-five billion?
How much, sorry? Or did you not?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
Um, oh.
I'm lifelong resident of the town of Rutland. I have watched these issues come and go over the years. And each time it comes down to a matter of dollars and cents. And right now I'm very much on the fence about this one too. But usually it's just comes down to the fact that the town doesn't have the money. And so it's been, you know, one hand to the other hand and one hand to the other hand. And so at this point in time, for me to make up my mind and say, ah, yes or no, it would require really some further thought and some further, uh, further looking into, in my opinion, because I've seen much more um, physically our better located, uh, locations come up before the town and be passed over. So in other words, you know, it's just a matter of which way the town feels about any particular item at any particular moment.
Madam Chair, just an update on the road. So in twenty twenty-one, the report that was uh, conducted by the DPW identified fourteen million dollars in, uh, road repairs just to get them up to their current standards, not to upgrade dirt roads to paved, just to maintain them to their, uh, current standards. So to pave a road at, I don't know what the multiplier is right now, but.
So roughly thirty-four million of infrastructure needs when we include the roads. And this town's budget is only what, twenty-six million a year? And we got thirty-four million dollars of infrastructure costs? So that's what we have to consider, right or wrong, for the town. That's one of the hard issues for us.
You're adding to the problem.
Yes.
To the problem.
What problem?
If I'm sinking, I don't want to add weight to my body. I don't want to add sandbags to my body and sink.
You're absolutely right. So how do we take four hundred thousand from all these needs?
Give them the time to look at it and finding other means of paying for this.
Don't have. People have already done that as a board.
We don't.
It's a legal matter, sir. This isn't our choice. It's a legal matter in the courts. This isn't. It's not our time clock. We only have a very small window to look at this. It has nothing to do.
Can we use that window to look at it?
We're looking at it. We have been looking at it.
So you, you tasked the ag com two weeks ago to come up with a plan. Uh, you know, a dozen people volunteering their time. I, I think we did a pretty good job in, in the window and the resources that we were given. We do have a working relationship with East Quavon Land Trust. Um, I, I can't make a commitment on their behalf, but they do this kind of thing on a regular basis. They know the timelines. They know it was at the end shot. Is far more familiar with it than any of us are. So can we use our time that we have to try to find those options?
So I think, oh, go ahead, Tamika.
I need to drop. So I just want to say, although the town meeting is November sixteenth, the warrant is closing in October. Um, tonight we're proposing to close the warrant October thirteenth. So we would have to have a warrant article with all of the supporting documentation by that time. So there would have to be a financial commitment from the, the East Quavon Land Trust.
Did you hear that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know. I talked very softly in that. So although the town meeting is not until November sixteenth, the town meeting warrant, which is when you have to have the articles in by, uh, tonight we're proposing, uh, October thirteenth. So everything would have to be ready and said and done by October thirteenth. That would be the end goal.
And what does that entail to get the warrant done by October thirteenth?
We would have to have a warrant article stating that the Quavon, the East Quavon Land Trust was willing to fund the purchase with supportive documentation that we could provide to our legal counsel before we could bring it to town meeting floor.
And does that seem like a reasonable time to bring it to October thirteenth, just to be able to find out if that can happen and the collaboration of the East Quavon Land Trust with their knowledge? That's, uh, it's well within the hundred and twenty days.
So one other thing I just want to add is, um, so we also have to have enough time for legal counsel to review it because the board is placing the warrant articles October twenty-seventh. So there we would, we would have to have everything eyes dotted, T's crossed, legal counsel approved with a warrant article written so that the board could place it.
Do you, uh, repeat it for them, please?
I'm sorry.
It's hard.
So I apologize. Um, so the select board has to place the warrant articles by October twenty-seventh. Um, in order for us to meet MGL posting requirements for the warrant. So that means we would have to have enough time for our legal counsel to review it and everything being placed in order for the board to place it by October twenty-seventh. So I don't know that two weeks based on experience in the past, I don't know that two weeks from October thirteenth to the twenty-seventh is going to be sufficient time for town council to review it and get back to us. Be cutting it very, very close.
Has it ever been done?
Um, but I don't, what do you mean, has it ever been done? We've not, but we've not.
Has that, is that timeframe at all possible? I mean, we're not asking, I'm not.
Very slim.
But there's a window.
The window, but not there.
So I thi- I mean, I think we, we as a board hear very much that the residents here are very much in favor of, of at least continuing or pursuing, um, to explore the option for this. I think me personally was, I was hoping to have a definitive decision tonight to pursue or not to allow our town staff time. If we had offers guaranteed funding to move forward. If we had offers guaranteed funding to move forward, um, or, or not. Again, I personally am struggling where we were sitting here six months ago, thinking that we were going to have to shut, shut departments and buildings and everything.
Wait a second. Karen Narwhal, forty, one forty-nine.
Can I finish? You're interrupting me.
Hold on with a second. Wait a second.
Excuse me.
Gary, put that out. It was immediately taken back.
Excuse me.
Hit that gap.
I would like to be able to finish my point.
Yeah, you've already said it twice.
That it was a, a very hard conversations that we were having as a town, as and, and, and as select board, town staff, other boards and commissions. I'm not pointing fingers at every, anyone individual. All I'm saying is that we were having very hard conversations. And I'm struggling now saying to the entirety of our ten thousand residents, we have residents who are, who struggle, are struggling unhappy with their, their water. And we have residents that are unhappy with the roads that they live on. And we have residents that are having sewage issues, septic, se- sewer issues. And so I struggle very much saying that this four hundred thousand dollars is, is an investment here. I also then can argue that four hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket in thirty-five million dollars of outstanding capital that we need. And as we've all acknowledged, that building new houses are going to add to the infrastructure needs of that area of town specifically, but throughout town as well. So that's where I personally am struggling. I just wanna put it out there that it's not an ea- I don't see this as an easy decision for any of us. I think that we've had a lot, we've had, used more than half of our time to do a lot of due diligence. And we continue to hear the, we might be able to have this, we might be able to have that. We don't have any guarantees. And I don't, I, I don't know that I can go to, in front of all of the residents and say that this, that we're going to do this at the detriment of everything else when we don't have any guarantees. And it doesn't seem like we're able to get any sort of guarantees. No one's willing to throw us four hundred thousand dollars. We would have had that by now. So I don't know how the board feels. We had, um, Paul, you've spoken a little bit. Jen, you came in a little bit late. I know you were on Zoom and kind of listening, so I don't know if you have anything to add. Um.
Um, I'm similar sentiments to everybody else. I struggle very much with this because I, I understand not wanting to add that managed growth is, is something that I support. And unfortunately, whether a developer buys this piece of property or not, there's subdivisions that are going up all across town. So a, a piece of property like this that has seven houses that go on it is unfortunately not gonna make a difference in the infrastructure that needs, that we still need to do for the town. If we had the, if the money was not an object, I would a hundred percent say absolutely, go do it. But we just dug ourselves out of a hole with the two and a half override. We haven't even had a chance to make positive steps for the town. And we're already talking about taking a very large chunk of money for a, a piece of property that again, I wish we could do, purchase without any ramifications. But there's no guarantees that we won't find ourselves back in having to ask the residents, ten thousand of them, for another two and a half override because we don't have enough money to run our town departments. And we, we don't wanna put ourselves in a position to have to do that again. So it's, it's definitely very, very tough. I mean, even just talking about all the capital needs, it was a couple of meetings ago, Chief Knipe was in here telling us that we're gonna need to purchase a new fire truck. That's gonna cost.
Three million dollars.
So it, you know, that's, that's a big chunk of money that we haven't even figured out or, or talked about where that's gonna come from. Uh, so there's, you said, it's, I, I would love to do it, but I just, I'm having a very difficult time justifying the expense.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on Viner Property on Emerald Road.
If we could, I, I would like to answer her question as to if we should allow her to go ahead and pursue grants out there, but we should set a time limit for her to be fair on when that has to be in.
It's tonight.
Austin already said we're not eligible for that.
No, no, allowing her to pursue those, allowing the admin.
Not eligible for that. But Austin said we're not eligible for that.
Not eligible, yeah.
Other funding, not just.
She wanted to research it, so.
Sir, my point was, we haven't got, one of my points was, we haven't had a definitive answer from the East Quavon Land Trust on that, it appears they have the funds. They're not interested in buying the land. We're, we understand that. But if we, that's maybe could fit in the timeline that you, if with their collaboration, their knowledge, they're another set of eyes.
I think.
They're willing to bridge the loan, so there is no short-term money coming out of the town coffers. If we could just have that time to bring that up to them, meet with them and bring it back to you, however that happens procedurally is worth, as Mr. Mattson said, he's still on the fence and would like a little more time to think about it. That's, I guess, what we're asking, when it comes right down to it, whether it's fiscal versus growth and all the emotions that go with it. Just a little bit more time is not going to ruin any deal for Mrs. Viner or affect the town or the land, lot, East Quavon Land Trust is a very viable option that we don't have an entire answer on. And there's a whole group of people there that hopefully will collaborate and be another set of eyes that could help us in the short term, to speak to your point.
Right. My point, we, it appears from the board, we don't have the money to upfront. So we would need an answer before we put the warrant together as to whether or not they will do that, but you would have to research it.
Okay.
We have done a ton of research here for us, so.
I bet you everybody in this.
But you would need to bring it back to us, right?
But that's, I think, to me, did you, to me, in your list of, I know you reached out to a few, was East Quavon Land, okay.
Didn't respond.
So East Quavon Land Trust.
Not possible.
I reached out to them, but they didn't.
When our office reached out.
She did respond. She just responded to the group and said, let's chat.
So maybe it was to ag com direct, I mean, if, I'm not sure if ag com reached out separately. All, all I know is that when our office reached out, we did not hear back from East Quavon Land Trust. I think we heard that.
They're, they're also not seeking out properties in Rutland. We don't actually fall really under their umbrella, so we went to them for help.
Right, well. And we don't have, that's one of the issues with Rutland currently is we don't have a land trust, right? That, that we fall under. So we heard back from a couple that had interest, but not in, any interest in funding. And so that's, I think that that's our issue, is there's interest here on this board for that property, but, but it's the funding mechanism. I think that that's where we are all struggling. I don't wanna speak for the entirety of the board, but from what I'm hearing, it's the funding mechanism that we're struggling with. And so I, I'm, we have heard interest from the land trust that yes, they're interested in the property, but not in helping fund the property or significantly to help fund the property. So that's where we're going. So I think we have a motion on the floor to close the hearing. That would mean that there's, we're closing it and then that would be a, a vote of the board whether to um, exercise our right um, a first refusal, which would then tr- um, trigger it to go um, explore funding mechanisms um, and most likely end up at the special town meeting or to um, refuse our um, right of first refusal, in which case the, the um, proposed purchase and sales um, would, would move forward. So I think we have a motion on the floor to close the meeting, not continue it. Um, I don't have a second as of yet, and that's where we would go.
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Questions, comments, concerns from the board? Roll call, Harry.
Segment I.
那段 I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
White man I. So now we have closed the hearing. We've had a host of um, letters. We, we've heard a lot from, from the residents on um, on the surrounding properties. We had the communications from the other boards and commissions um, that we had seeked opinions from. Um, and so we've had our conversation. So is this board comfortable with a motion?
So how do I put that? I'd like to make a motion to, how do we word that?
To turn it down would be to waive your right of first refusal. To accept it would be to exercise your right of first refusal.
Like to make a motion to waive our right of refusal for the land at uh, finer property Emerald Road.
So we have a motion to waive the right of first refusal. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. From this board, questions, comments, concerns, additional discussion?
Just confirming this means end of.
End of discussion.
And no more further.
It, it would go.
Financial options?
Correct. It would go to the um, seller and um, purchaser to execute their agreements.
May I just throw my, what I had mentioned and just to have it on the books? The only other option thinking of is, remind me of the term again, capital.
Capital outweigh, exclusion.
A capital exclusion, which would essentially be a one-year override, tax override to fund, put it to the taxpayers to fund that.
And I think that that would be town meeting as well as the ballot.
And then we have to go to town meeting as well as election.
And so then we would.
And do we have the timeframe to do that?
Right, a timeframe and um, yeah. And I think general, I mean, yeah. Obviously, there's always, we have the special town meeting already scheduled. We were mindful of scheduling that for um, this consideration, but the timeframe for a, a special election, there's a cost for elections. Um, generally, I think regardless, it's generally in the five to seven thousand dollar range. Um, I think, I don't wanna misquote, but.
Yeah, and the, at, at this time, we would have time to properly post and hold a special election prior to the hundred and twenty days expiring.
So we have motion and second um, to waive our right of first refusal. We've had the conversation and discussion. Uh, hearing, nothing additional. Harry, I'll start with roll call.
Start with me, huh?
I always start at that end.
On the right of first refusal, uh, to not accept it, segment I.
那段 I.
Ledger I with regret.
Galvin I.
White man I with regret.
Nice knowing you, people.
You did it again.
I know, one more time.
Good job.
Glad you know we live in the last tenth of town. Here is an override.
No, he said it's like the condenser or something.
No force, you stop the bleeding. And you're bleeding. Put bandage on. You don't.
No.
Very interesting.
Thank you, Becky, for those. Figures.
Gonna be the bad guy no matter what.
That's right. Can make everybody happy.
I was just talking to Becky and I said, if we did the one year, that would equate on a four hundred thousand dollars. Just for that year.
And we just had, two and a half just passed, yeah, let's ask.
One neighborhood.
So.
We have ten thousand people to think.
Yep. So moving out of a very tough public hearing, I think that's one of the more difficult ones that we've had in, in my memory.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're moving into town administrator update.
Do you think I was looking forward to giving my report to a record crowd? Forward, yeah.
Sorry to chase him out.
I'm happy you're here, though. Uh, love the crowd. Um, good evening, uh, good to see everyone. Um, just to roll right into it, uh, budget and finance, uh, we, the audit is now uh, fully complete. We'll receive the final document after uh, submitting comments from staff, uh, finance, uh, we're waiting.
We just got it this afternoon.
Yeah.
She emailed it.
Yeah, so I did see that, but we, we don't have the paper copies yet, but what we do, we'll, we'll, we'll forward that to you as well.
Final one, so, yep. Okay.
Um, as uh, select and segment has mentioned, uh, we're uh, uh, working through the capital process. A request from town departments are due uh, this week, Wednesday, uh, to my office and we'll compile and then start working with capital committee to review those requests. Um, and then shortly after, we'll begin the budget season. Uh, that manual will be sent to departments and committees uh, next week. Can't believe it's already here. Uh, just to give you an update on where we are, uh, on yearly expenditures for the general and the enterprise funds. Uh, just about twenty-six for the general fund and just over thirteen for the water and sewer fund. Any questions on budget and finance? Uh, personnel, uh, there's always a lot going on with personnel. I'm happy to share the news. Uh, Ryan Quinn was hired as the deputy fire chief. Uh, he's actually deployed overseas at the moment, so he'll be returning in December and, and uh, moving out to Rutland or at least to the area and starting his new job with the fire department uh, in January. I just wanna thank um, not only Chief Knipe, uh, but um, MRI for their assistance in this uh, process. Was uh, happy to witness some of it and participate in some of the interviews. It was an extensive process and even MRI, they were uh, very impressed with the quality of candidates that we received for this position. Um, a lot of good people applied, internal, external. And I'm very look, very much looking forward to uh, meeting Deputy Chief and introducing uh, him to the community as well. Uh, he currently is the captain in onset. Lives down there and, and is looking to relocate to the area.
Okay, coming up in this cold town.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we uh, have completed the uh, interviews for the finalists for HR coordinator. Uh, just uh, taking another day or so to review uh, some of the notes uh, and discuss and likely make an offer to candidate this week. So looking forward to uh, uh, onboarding our new HR coordinator. Uh, we're also uh, ongoing with the town planner. We've actually received some, some very qualified applications from uh, folks looking to, uh, to take the town planner, community development coordinator position. Actually, very, very impressed with the, the candidates that uh, we've received for that recruitment as well. And uh, still looking for a, a DPW mechanic, uh, still looking for a couple of laborers in the um, public works department. We did hire one, still looking for two more, so that needs to be updated to two. Uh, we'll be beginning the same process for deputy fire chief, uh, that was followed for the deputy fire chief position uh, for the lieutenant's position. Uh, with the retirement of a firefighter paramedic, we actually just posted today for a firefighter paramedic position. And as Becky knows, uh, liberty.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's upcoming.
Oh.
Maybe I announced that before, you know. Anyways.
I'm like, who is this?
Uh, and as uh, discussed at the last board meeting, uh, we are beginning the process of recruiting our new treasurer collector. Any questions on personnel?
Um, I know DPW tends to be one area that's tough to attract from municipal government, um, or municipal positions. Um, is there anything that we as a town, I mean, municipal wise and municipality wise in general should be doing or looking towards to, to be more um, competitive?
The CDL, it's the biggest thing. Uh, it's finding folks who I think were good on pay. Um, it's finding folks who have the CDL or they're willing to go take the class, which now costs, it's about five thousand dollars to take the class. It's not like it used to be, where you could just hop in a truck, take the test. Now you're required to take the class. Uh, you would think that municipalities, like other laws, we would be exempted or not. Uh, we actually have uh, uh, laborer right now who's completing the class. But it took him a while to be able to uh, have the resources to be able to take the class. So to answer your question, uh, there's some communities that they will assist with the expenses for obtaining the CDL with the condition that they, you know, they work for a year, they work for two years. If they leave employment for that two-year period, they have to return the funds. So looking at something like that could be a possibility. Sorry, Harry.
No, uh, that, I just, on the, the police lieutenant, are we looking for, I guess I don't, a police lieutenant who's also a firefighter paramedic?
No, no, comma, firefighter paramedic.
Separate? Okay. Alright.
Yeah, that would be actually a really good pos- uh, position. We can merge those departments there. Um.
And currently, we don't, sorry, to go back to the DPW, we currently don't offer any sort of incentives or anything um, for that and it's always been a funding.
Yeah, the only thing we do is, once you have it, we'll pay for um, re- renewal.
The renewal.
Are those, sorry, are those staff union or non-union?
Which ones? Which ones?
The DPW.
Those are unique.
They are unique.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that something we should discuss in executive session about how to rearrange maybe to help that? Period of time, how much we do, what length of service and stuff? If they're that hard to get for every town out there.
Well, that's, so yes, to answer your question, yes, but that's also a great point. We're also competing with Hubbardston. If you drive by their DPW, they've had the sandwich board outside looking for laborers for a long time. Uh, I just talked with the town manager in the town of Shrewsbury. Very well-run community, they have all the resources you could ask for. They're having a hard time recruiting laborers.
I was gonna say, it's not unique to Rutland. That's why I know it's um a larger municipal concern and I wasn't sure where where that was falling.
Yeah. Now, I do have some ideas, you know, so uh it's later in my update, but I uh I met with the new administrator for the Worcester Transit Authority. And to give you a reference, they will not only pay a hundred percent for the CDL, you can actually take the class. At the WRTA to to drive one of the buses and they're having a hard time. They have sign-on bonuses, they have everything you could imagine. Uh, and they're having a hard time. So um can we partner with a WRTA? Can we partner with a BATH? Or the school district to get um candidates or those who are interested in the industry, the certifications early on. Um, I think we're we're getting to a point where we have to think outside the box for recruitment and that just may be a couple of ideas and certainly there may be others too.
And today, unfortunately, a lot of CDLs are truck drivers, long haulers making lots of money.
May I suggest um? The work program at Worcester County? I know they used to have one. For the sheriff's department. They have a lot of worker programs where they're like uh s- sign-on and and um they work part-time. I I don't know if that's something this town would think about, but they may have uh laborers.
Now, are they residents of Worcester County?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a work program.
Yeah.
I worked, I did it for the state, so I know.
The I. Depending on what uh established their residency, that may be a challenge in terms of.
Well, yeah, of course. They're not, you're not under minimum security if you've done anything. They're mostly drug offenders. I'm just thinking outside, trying to think outside the box.
Yeah.
There's a lot of guys that are getting out and they need work and uh if we're having trouble filling the positions, might be worth looking into.
Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah, no, and and I think honestly all, when I attend. The management associations or the administrators meetings, that's the number one topic of discussion is recruiting and retaining talent. And this is just one of the many challenges that every community, whether it's again, like a Shrewsbury, a Rutland, a Worcester. Those that have a lot of resources and those that do not. So um I think it's an industry-wide thing that we'll definitely have to come up with some creative solutions towards, so. Uh, just want to keep you updated on projects. So the parking lot project, uh, the twenty-first is this week. Yes, it is. Uh, they'll be paving the parking lot this week. Uh, so we'll be closing the lot for paving and then um working with the company to do the line striping probably overnight. Which will have to dry and no interruption for town business. Uh, Miles Road Water Main Installation is ongoing. Actually installed the pipe, now they're pressure testing the lines. Uh, they believe that they'll actually be done, if not this week, early next week with that project as well. Uh, just want to give you an update. We uh. Had the bid opening for the Naquawag Elementary School Electrical Panel Upgrades. We did have one bidder. bidder, uh, the bid actually came in about ten thousand less than what was budgeted for, which is good news for us. Uh, so we'll be um just making sure kind of uh making sure the bidder is is fully responsive. All the documentation is provided and then we'll be uh doing a bid award for uh for that project. We also had the bid opening for the public safety building and library, uh, roof repairs, um, and unfortunately, we did not receive any bidders. Um, we think it's timing, uh, it's a good project. Uh, but we just think right now, in terms of companies that are looking to go out to bid, just wasn't a good time to go out. So we'll be rebidding that project as well. And then happy to say as well, the Wachusett Street Trench Repair Project actually begins tomorrow. Uh, so we're we're actually using some funding from the Winter Recovery Program, uh, which is a kind of a chapter ninety program. Um, to repair the trench on Wachusett Street from the Princeton Town Line. And then the second component uh to that is they'll be paving essentially as far as they can go, about a thousand feet or so uh for that project. Any questions on those?
I just have a couple, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, for the town building projects, can we just try to make sure that appropriate permits and everything are are pulled through appropriate town. Offices so that any work that is done is kind of, everybody knows what's been done. Um, some of the feedback that I've heard is that sometimes town buildings are a a little bit more lax on on permit, pulling permits or whatever. And I think then it's hard to track who did what work or or what work was done or whatever. Um, and. I had something else and I forget, I'm sorry. Uh, if I think of it, I'll come back to it, but that was the big one that jumped out at me.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, well, to answer your question, absolutely. Uh, we should always be pulling permits. Um. Also, you may have noticed fifty-six is looking a little bit better. They paved as much as they could for the sidewalk. There's obviously some parts outstanding, um, where you see there's uh no granite installed or. Um, no pavement, that's actually where where they're starting to install the walls. So they actually started on the wall across from uh DPW, looks good. So this will, there'll be uh two more of these walls as part of the project and then obviously they'll they'll pave afterwards. So the the project is coming along. Um, looks like the dam uh prod- uh the dam component of this project will be completed in the spring, which is also ahead of schedule. Utility relocation to Karen's question from a couple of meetings ago is about four or five months ahead of schedule, so they will be complete. By snowfall, I don't want to.
One on top of Miles Road is gonna be a problem in the wintertime if we don't get that one done, cause that does jut out quite a bit.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're, yeah, so they're working from the the north side of Palmigus and making their way towards uh Main Street.
They've made good stuff, but that one right there is gonna be a problem in the wintertime, cause people are gonna come out and they're gonna skin, they're gonna hit.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so they're uh they're well ahead of schedule. One of the challenges that they uh, especially with uh with Verizon, is they were scheduled for November. They they booked their year as if they're coming to Rutland in November. So now we're ahead of schedule, trying to push them to be a little bit earlier. That's the challenge with some of the utilities. And we know the utilities are very responsive. Hopefully there's no one that works for utility now. Um, I apologize. Uh, I uh I just wanna um give a shout out to uh Director Nichols from the Council on Aging. Uh, we worked together uh to uh. Receive a surplus uh van from the Worcester Regional Transit Authority. Um, essentially, the WRTA, they they cycle through a lot of these vans uh every year. They receive new fun- funding from the federal government to uh purchase new vans. Uh, so this is a a twenty sixteen uh van. It's about a twelve-passenger, fully accessible, handicap accessible. Um, one of the challenges that uh that the Council on Aging has is uh with only one van. And the current vendor that is utilized by the WRTA, there's really no flexibility for the needs of uh the senior population. Or those that frequent the community center. So this van uh was donated by the WRTA and will allow for town staff. Uh, to provide for uh transportation uh to your medical appointments, uh, access to uh to grocery stores to address a lot of the needs. Um, transportation needs of the community. Um, so we received the van for free. We have a tentative grant application. Uh, my experience with this grant, I've received it in the past. Um. I want to say guarantee, cause I don't want to jinx it, but they um will always fund projects like this. Uh, what they really don't like to do is ongoing, you know, five years in a row, funding these projects. So. Uh, the grant application through Mastod is actually to assist with the uh expenses of um a part-time driver. Uh, right now, we do have a driver who is willing to uh work on a volunteer basis to be able to uh transport folks, but. Uh, ideally, we have someone who, you know, they make a little bit of money to be able to provide the transportation. So I do want to thank the WRTA. And uh and Director Nichols for her work on this project. I drove the van from Worcester. It went great.
And it went there.
Yeah, I took it right through Chandler Street, downtown Worcester. It was beautiful. Um, radio needs to be fixed, but uh or it's just a really bad radio station.
Two questions for you when you get through.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Question one, um, on the van, are we going to be supporting other towns in the area with the van?
Uh, that's a good idea. So actually, there's a model that um in my previous community, we actually worked with five towns to support this. I think it's a good idea. Actually, it was something that came up in a conversation with. My meeting with the administrator, um, something we haven't looked at yet. Really, we're focused on getting the van and getting the grant and then we can expand that. I suspect, especially right now, I think uh she's got a list of people that are ready for this van to start operating, so I suspect. As we scale it and, you know, find a proper way to manage this program, get opportunity to partner with neighborhood managers.
The reason I mention it is I talked with Nancy about a year and a half, two years ago through CIPC. Is that if we can get a van that will do, then the other towns will be responsible for a portion of the cost.
Yeah.
Because of the cost initially on it, the other towns wouldn't go. Now that we have it free, that was why if we have that opportunity.
Yeah, it's it's a great idea, especially if you're, and you know, just example, if you're um. You know, if you're going to CVS and Tattletick, you're passing through Paxton, it's a good idea to stop by the Paxton Council on Aging and pick up some folks, right? So uh certainly something that, you know, we wouldn't be uh uh innovating that concept. Uh, there's, you know, some communities that are doing that already. Uh, but again, this is a good first step for us to be able to provide that. Transportation is a huge, not only for economic development, but. Um, there's studies that that show lack of transportation becomes a public health issue. Um, and it's definitely an identified need here in Rutland.
I mean, just from our perspective, there's a lot of people who live in surrounding towns that go to our church. Some of them are quite disabled and wish they had something to be able to help them. Get around or even come to Sunday church type of thing, so.
Absolutely.
That's right, okay. And operational assistance is only for one year?
Likely, we could we could probably make it work for two years.
Stretching it a little?
Yeah, I mean, so in my previous community, we were probably the longest running grant-supported program. Um, it's like eight years in a row. Uh, but you, you know, essentially what you have to do is you have to also show that, one, uh, it's actually providing service to the community. It's not just a pilot or an idea. Um, so there's a lot of data that we have to collect um and report to, not only the great agency, but. It would make sense to report to to the WRTA as well. Um, and then if you're expanding, so if you're expanding hours or days, that allows you to keep applying for the grant too.
And the individual that's gonna be doing the van, are they gonna be considered an employee of the town?
We haven't evaluated that yet. We could probably, we could probably work on a contracted basis, but you think about also probably from insurance and liability. Maybe a good idea to make them a part-time employee.
Long-term, I'm thinking, yes, we have this person in the operational assistance, but once that goes away, we still have a liability of the person. That's an employee of the town, right? That has to be factored in the cost.
Yeah, yeah, and so when we did factor um. Insurance, obviously salary, there wouldn't be any benefits with this position, but um into our grant application and then. As we work to develop budgets over the next few years, we'll make sure that that's.
Should be like cap budget, at least five years, we should get operational assistance, yeah.
That'd be nice, yeah.
I have a question for the operational piece, and I know in the past I've brought it up with Nancy in meetings previous, is there any sort of um. Like the equivalent of quarry training or anything for drivers or the individuals that are working with. A a potentially at-risk population also?
Yeah, so there's required trainings and certifications that if you're if you're driving this bus, uh, that you'll have to have. So I mentioned that there's wheelchair lift. Uh, there's a actually wheelchair lift training that you have to, that has to be completed. Um, uh, you know CPR, there's I think a list of six or seven different certifications that um. The drivers would have to uh have to meet to be able to operate. And those also are included in the cost of the uh the grants.
Good question, Lee. So that brings me, do we need a a CPR machine in those vans?
I was AED, that's what I was going to.
Um, typically, no, no, typically in the buses, they don't include those. Um, certainly if if someone wanted to donate one.
Okay.
Fire department or someone else, um, I don't think we'd say no to it, but um but those are typically not included on the on the bus.
Yeah, right. Okay. Fire extinguisher, that's it. Right.
Thank you, and thank you to you and Nancy both for the work that you've done to get it, cause I know it's been an ongoing need for a long time.
Yeah, it's exciting, and it's a, it's a nice bus. I've, I've driven worse. Um, it's actually, it's a, it's a nice vehicle.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, just a couple more updates. So uh did meet with State Rep Ferguson, uh, just to our initial kind of meet and greet, but to talk about some ongoing town projects. And also just wanted to uh get to up to speed on the current earmarks that we have and what the future earmark process will look like. Um, so as I just want to remind folks, we we did receive two earmarks in the FY twenty-four budget. One was an extension of the prison camps funding and the other was for the dispatch project. And as I mentioned earlier, I also met with the new uh Transit Authority Administrator, Josh Rickman. He comes from New Jersey. Uh, he's great. He's got a lot of uh good ideas to improve not only the the system in Worcester, which needs a lot of work, but. Um, also recognizes that, you know, town of Rutland and the surrounding towns in the region, you really don't receive a lot of service from from the WRTA, so. Um, I think has an understanding and appreciation for that. And I did mention, you know, one of his first questions was asking about growth. Obviously, we've had a lot of growth uh over the past few years, um, so there may be an opportunity there to partner with the Transit Authority. I'm not saying that that means we'll get transit service in town, but the point is, I think they're looking at it and um. As the uh representative to the advisory board, that's something I always like to bring up is don't forget about Rutland or the small towns. Um, and uh as mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the uh school district superintendent formed a facilities and town growth task force. Uh, town administrator is one of the members as lo- as well as the members of the school committee and facility subcommittee. Uh, the uh end goal of this task force is actually to select a vendor to complete the facility, use of facility study. And uh the town growth analysis. Now, they're looking to be a little bit more comprehensive than previous town growth analysis, so. You know, not just looking at population and building permits, but really getting into the weeds, talking with town officials, talking with the town planners. Uh, building inspectors to get an idea, you know, the housing of the building permits that are issued or to be issued. You know, is it uh, is it a, you know, couple of apartments or is it a couple of um, you know, four-bedroom homes that could really have an impact on the school, so on the school budget, so.
Is is there a date when that's expected to be finished?
Yeah, so uh we, the first meeting was to talk about the, they just, they didn't issue a formal request for proposals. They just got a couple of, you know, kind of draft proposals from uh two different vendors. Uh, they are looking for three vendors to be able, for the committee to evaluate. We'll be meeting again next month to talk about the kind of the next steps in formulating a request for proposals, so I would imagine we'll select a vendor. Maybe in about another month or so. I think we're actually meeting in two weeks.
The reason I ask is that growth task force is something we should be looking at because our metro bylaws, far as in. Hey, unless we really, so I like to have that new information available.
Yeah, so. I don't think we'll have, uh, so uh I think Quavon School District just completed a similar study. And I think that was maybe almost a year, if not more, is worth of work, so I don't think we'll have any good data or anything that could inform us on evaluating. Whether or not to continue that that bylaw unfortunately.
Um, if I may, just caution that I think, I think it's a great. Um, plan to do the growth task force, but I worry about what the analysis is, who's do, like not who's doing the analysis, but how the analysis is being done. Because I think historically, we haven't had um in town a great success with uh accurate analyses. Um, and so I understand that this would be for the whole district and a little bit of a different avenue than what the town has looked at. Um, so Harry, to your point, I think the information would be great to have, but I don't know that that's. Going to provide all the information that we need. We know we have a lot of housing turnover, especially a lot of our older neighborhoods are in that twenty to thirty-year time. So not just looking at new growth, but also um existing overturning growth um and everything as well, so.
I think my purpose in looking at that was to say, okay, here's the new criteria. Does it match up with what people projected five years ago?
Right.
Or was that information not even qualified for the report?
Right.
That's what I'm looking at. I mean, whether we keep it or not, that's a town decision, so to speak, because we gotta do our due diligence on it. But I just wanted to have factual information that makes sense.
Right, and I think my my only pause to, I think that at the high level, we can look at it, but they're probably going to be different analyses with different. Goals, um, and so we have, because in Rutland, only a small portion was the impact on on schools. Um, where this, I think the focus is the impact on the district as a whole. So um, I think that there are different. Um, you know, it's, it would definitely be beneficial and helpful, but I hate to say that it's a yes. But I hate to say that it's a yes or no, you know, under comparison.
And so I think that even the district recognizes that the, you know, annual projections that they receive from their vendor of choice hasn't been accurate. And that's why they really want to, well, first of all, involving town officials and not just members of the school committee, for example. Involving town officials, but also much more comprehensive. So they're looking at the aging of the community, if there's redevelopment potential there or turnover in communities. That was actually a, a large point of discussion in our meeting the other day. I was talking about that. But yeah, again, also just, you know, not just looking at, you know, going into viewpoint and seeing what our building permits are, but actually diving into the data. And having a, you know, comprehensive informed analysis of what it looks like for growth. Because, you know, while we're growing, you know, the Town of Princeton, for example, their population is shrinking and, you know, they, you know, they're, so they're looking at different models. So the idea is you get a report that talks about facility use, talks about town growth, and provides recommendations to the district and the towns. You know, how can be, how can you be creative if, this is just one of the many ideas. But if Princeton's population is shrinking, but Rutland's is, is growing, is there a possibility to, to share some of the, some of the space at, at another school? Or I think Thomas Princeton, Princeton is, is a big STEM school. So if you are a student and you're interested in STEM programming, you could attend that school. And have a little bit more catered curriculum towards those needs. So looking to be a little bit creative as well for the use of the buildings and thinking long-term rather than just. We grew seventy-eight students, looks like we're gonna need a new schools next year, so diving in a little bit more. For five years, not next year.
I think it's interesting because we are a regional district from K through eight, but the individual towns are still kind of very much town-focussed. A lot of regional schools, Ks through eights have regional elementaries, regional middles, and a regional high school. So I think that that's, we were in, what you was in early on the regional school model. And has had a lot of growth in, in the towns. I mean, even if you look at Princeton or Paxton compared to where we, they were in the sixties and seventies, have changed a lot. And so I think it's a worthwhile dive.
Just one more update, just wanna give a shout out to the Economic Development Committee. Through the work, actually have a grant, a technical assistance grant that was received from CMRPC. They developed the Discover Rutland MA campaign. This is an economic development initiative. To highlight some of the businesses and services that are provided in the Town of Rutland. They're looking to, they actually launched this, I think, last week or this week. Probably saw it on some of the social media. I think they have their own social media pages as well. This will be on the town website, but the committee itself is looking to collaborate with businesses, town departments, and committees. And, you know, they're talking about a business social, some other economic development-related events. I think this is a great initiative and just wanna highlight that and thank the committee for their work.
May I thank, say thank you to your office, Tamika and Austin for the assistance with the grant. As well as to the Economic Development Committee for, for the work on this. Can our office put out, and I don't know if it would be appropriate, but put out a memo kind of to the other boards and commissions? I'm thinking specifically the Events Committee, but other, some other boards and commissions that, that this is a formal campaign. And kind of work collaboratively with the Economic Development Commission, so that we're not. Doubling up on efforts or whatever, because I think sometimes things get lost in translation. So I personally would like to see more collaboration and kind of, I think, economic development have a little bit more of the oversight. And utilize this campaign wholly, if that makes sense.
Sure, actually, I think one of the, actually, one of the members of the EDC, I think, attended the Events Committee tonight. I don't know if it was related to this, but hopefully you guys talked about it, if not. But certainly, I think, you know, I, I'm excited about economic development opportunities. So whether it's reaching out to the Events Committee or Economic Development Committee, I think, to that point. Lee, I mean, I think all our boards and committees should, you know, work with each other to promote these events. This won't be successful without the support of not only the townspeople, town departments, but their peers on some of these town committees as well.
And I think even from a department perspective, you know, I think of building, the building department and planning department specifically. But I'm sure there's other boards and commissions and departments that would benefit. So maybe a memo can just go out kind of to all boards, commissions, and departments as to, hey, can we try to actually put oomph behind this? Because it's an actual campaign that would, is well thought out and everything. And I also would like to put it out there that we still, I would like to continue to have the conversation as to the pros and cons of. An economic development coordinator or something, because I think that it's, it, this piece really needs to be proactive. And we can't just continue to kind of sit on our hunches and hope that people will come to us. And that I think we've seen in other communities that have invested in an economic development position. That they've seen a, a great return on investment of that. You know, I think of Clinton and Gardner specifically, but there's other communities also, even if it's initially a part-time piece or something. To, to make a concerted effort, if, again, that's one of our goals and objectives as well as what we hear from town. So if we can do it without spending a lot of money, at least initially, to show that there is a return on that investment, I think it's valuable.
That's it.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions or anything specific for Austin?
No, I think, first off, that EDC has been working on getting that marketing piece done. Really a great first step in, in doing that, you know, so. Like to see that continue, and I'm not sure that if we hire a town planner initially, if we don't get any C guy, that the town planner can help out at EDC too, type of thing.
Thank you, Austin and Tamika, and to the rest of the staff, because I know it's all hands on deck, and it's been a, a lot from, from a lot of angles, so, thank you. Moving into new and special business, we have a number of one-day liquor license requests. So I will start with the first one we have listed is a one-day liquor license, licenses for the Harvest Festival at Schultz Farm. October twenty-first and twenty-second. We have the application in our packet. And. Sorry, I'm just.
Excuse me, there are five vendors total. They're each applying for two licenses, one for the twenty-first and one for the twenty-second. So when the board makes their motion, if I could just kindly ask you to, you know, specifically state, yeah, that it's for the twenty-first and the twenty-second.
Is that the Harvest Festival? We can just categorize it as that? That's the?
Yeah, you could say that.
Say the Harvest Fest?
Sure.
And the vendor, so this is all under the same applicant?
They're all different applicants. The Harvest Festival is taking place at Schultz Farm, but they're all separate vendors who have each applied for their own license. They've paid separately and they have separate insurance.
That's the staple packet I have here.
Correct, and that's all the licenses and one, it's front and back.
River Sticks Brewing, where are they out of?
Pittsburgh.
Uh, Pittsburgh.
Is that Pittsburgh?
It was like Pittsburgh or Leominster, right?
Not that I'd burn.
So for the Harvest Festival for Saturday and Sunday, it looks like it's River Sticks.
It's all five for both days.
Right, I'm just going through.
Yep, there's Cobrock Winery, Penny Pinchers, Redemption Rock, Moon Hill, and River Sticks.
I see Mr. Schultz here.
What's in a group? I get it, what'd you say?
I see Mr. Schultz is here. Would you mind telling us of the board why there are so many? Because normally when they come across, we have one, you know, like.
I can speak for him, I'm, I'm his representative. I'm actually the event coordinator. So what was the question, sir?
Why are there so many breweries being represented here? Because normally when it comes across, we see one for seven days, another brewery for. So, but I see here different, are you trying to showcase different beers throughout the region?
Yep, so this, we're following the same format that was from last year, from Rotoberfest. And these are the exact same breweries from last year. The only difference is we are extending a, a separate day, which would be Sunday. And it would be a shorter day, but it's the same breweries minus a few that we didn't, I wasn't managed to get on there.
I'd like to get down there every day and try a different brewery. That'll work. Thank you.
You're more than welcome to come.
And it's eleven AM to seven PM on Saturday, on, for the twenty-first for all of them. And then eleven AM to five PM for the Sunday for all five of them, just for public and clarification. And Tamika, everything, insurance and fees and everything, I can see everything here?
All the fees are paid, insurance obtained, internal approval through viewpoint, all the boxes were checked.
You want to stay separate or just?
Um, no, you can combine them.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for Saturday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And Sunday, October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Saturday, eleven AM to seven PM, Sunday, eleven AM to five PM. At the Harvest Festival two thousand twenty-three, which is at Schultz Farm, Rutland.
So I think we have to specify the, the breweries, so it's okay if you wanna combine them all into one motion, I would just list out the breweries if you don't mind.
Okay. The breweries to be included. Let's see, Moon, Rob, hold on, sorry. Moon Hill Brewing Company. Coldbrook Springs Winery. River Sticks. And then the Penny, Penny Pinchers Brewing Company. Is that all of them?
Uh, Redemption Rock.
And Redemption Rock. To all be included in the Harvest Festival two thousand twenty-three. Good?
I like it.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, comments, concerns from the board? Hearing none, we'll call Harry.
Second and I?
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. We have a one-day liquor license for. Adija Ventures, one sixty-three Maple Ave. For October fourteenth. This one is.
This one is also for an event that Devon is holding at Schultz Farm on that date.
And it, but, and it's asking for eleven AM to eleven PM though, instead of. And so that we are not digging ourselves in any sort of hole. For the agricultural bylaw, accessory use bylaw, the times are, are within their stipulated.
Yes.
Usage, okay.
So this is still Schultz, right?
Yeah, this is still Schultz, yep.
Why is it Schultz on this and this East View on this? I'm just curious, why is one Schultz and one East View?
It's Schultz Farm doing business as East View Farm. So it's the same farm, but sometimes they use different names.
Is this, and, I mean, it's maybe not necessarily under our purview for the liquor license itself. But is, it's obviously an event if it's eleven AM to eleven PM, can you speak as to what the event is if there's?
Yes, ma'am, so I am looking to bring more agricultural awareness to the farm and bring more people down to Rutland. I actually am talking to a chef, and this is for a farm-to-table dinner. Where he's going to take the agriculture from the farm, you know, tomatoes, fresh vegetables, and we're going to do like an event for, at the farm. And it's going to have a wine pairing, things of that nature. And I'm looking at before the dinner to do some sort of bonsai, either a bonsai bar event. Where we have a person come in and we'll do bonsai trees and stuff like that. So I thought it would be nice to have that kind of option for people to purchase beer and wine during the event. And, and kind of do a precursor to the Harvest Fest and say like, East View Farm is here. And we're looking to, you know, build this out and have more events here that increase the agricultural awareness. That, that is my goal for October fourteenth, so.
Thank you for speaking to it. Um, does the board have any other questions for Devon or our office?
So it's the same breweries from the last one?
I know, this would be to.
Or ETC, this would be?
This one would be for.
This would be myself.
Adija Ventures.
So just, just Adija Ventures?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Eleven AM to eleven PM, Adija Ventures LLC, which would be held at the East View Farm in Rutland.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second motion.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Can I ask a question?
We have a motion and a second, but sure.
What Tom just said, I believe, was October twenty-third, not October fourteenth.
No, it is October fourteenth.
I realize that's what it says here, but Tom just said.
Did I say the twenty-third?
I believe you said the twenty-third.
You said the fourteen.
If I said the twenty-third, I meant the fourteen. No, that's all right. If I said that, no, I appreciate you catching it.
And I was looking at the application, so in my head, I was reading what he was saying and not listening to what he was saying. Thank you for that. amended motion if needed. Paul, do you amend your second to the fourteenth, which is where the application is for?
Amend it to the second of the fourteenth of October.
Thanks, Randy. We'll call Harry.
Second and I?
Matt's an I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I. And then moving in, we have requests to extend, extend hours. On the one-day liquor licenses for which we had already issued licenses for. That would be the weekend of October tenth, October seventh and eighth, and October twenty-first and twenty-second. I'm interested because we just set the one for October twenty-first and twenty-second for the hours that we set. And here it says that we need to amend those.
That was my error.
Sorry, I just realized it also.
No, I don't, no, we, I wanted to extend it because originally it was for, I think it was seven PM.
Yeah.
And I, I wasn't here for that, but we were looking to have some acoustic after the event, having an acoustic player. And I just wanted to make sure that we were covered. If not, it's okay. But I just wanted to make sure we were covered if it was, if it went after seven PM.
So until what time?
I believe it was ten PM.
Okay, it's, yeah, in our notes, it says requesting to extend hours from a close of eight PM, I think was the original time. On the original one-day liquor license, and then extending that until ten PM. Thank you, sorry for the.
So the seventh and the eighth were eight PM?
Um, so I apologize, now I remember why those two dates are on there. So the original liquor licenses were not issued for the breweries that you just issued them for. These were for, specifically for Schultz Farm. And so they're looking to extend the liquor license just for the Schultz Farm one, not for the ones that you've just approved for the other vendors. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the Harvest.
That's right.
Yes, well, yeah, the, the permits were pulled for Schultz Farm, but technically, the breweries already pulled their permits.
Right.
So they, the permits were kind of just pulled, so.
So my question was for the breweries that we just approved for the, for the Harvest Fest?
That's done at seven.
Okay, those are the ones that we just, because we just talked about those end times of the seven and five, I think, were. And so then, but then you're asking for the extension on the Schultz Farm licenses that had been previously issued. That we had issued from, um, eight, to end at eight.
Yes.
You would like to extend until ten.
Yes.
Um, so that Schultz Farm could continue to serve if you wanted until ten.
Yes, if we have the acoustic player come after, and then we can still be within the guidelines, so I just wanna make sure we were covered for everything.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion on our end.
I appreciate it.
I had to stop and think about for a second too, I, so I'm sorry.
So I apologize, I haven't been up there since this started. Is the Schultz in the building where they used to have breakfast and stuff?
Right now, no, this is for the outside, this is for where the barn area is, where Rotoberfest was.
I, I didn't make it up there, so I unfortunately haven't been up there yet since. So it's in the barn area?
Yes, yes.
It's up above the barn area.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a site up there that.
Yeah, there's a site up there that I made quite a few years ago and.
Okay, and it's, and the others are coming up with the trailers, the other businesses, or it's just all being?
I believe if I, if I can remember, they're all bringing their own tents, it's the tents and, you know, for the beer. It's the same as last year, they just do the samples and they do sell the full pours.
Okay, so those tents are gonna shut down at seven and you're gonna stay in or wanna stay up until ten?
Yes, sir.
And again, just my own clarification, we just had this clarification, it fits within the agriculture accessory, their agricultural accessory use. They don't, they're within the times. That's.
Not all of the decisions specified times.
Right, they're all written a little bit differently. And I know that and I just didn't look at theirs from the planning office, did, I don't know yet if you had looked at it.
Have Schultz Farm, no.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we were not creating a.
Is it, so I guess my question is, we can extend the hours for the liquor license, but we can't necessarily. If there's any other provisions in the site plan for events.
That's on them, right.
The site plan versus the serving piece, so.
Right, and it sounds like they don't have, it's, my question is more from the public perspective. That their site plan does not, I mean, anybody can go request the site plan review and look at it. Um, but it's not one that has uh time specified.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't seen it.
I have the copy if you'd like to take a look at it.
The site plan? Oh, please, if you have it.
Believe it was um.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, Tamika, I imagine you have looked through to confirm, but I just wanna make sure.
There is no time, it it says shortly thereafter.
I was gonna say, the thing I see for timing is that musicians. Um, this is under.
This is the first one, I believe?
Under C.
That's the, maybe the application.
I, I think this is the decision. Under noise control, musicians will face away from neighboring properties and live music will usually end by nine PM or shortly thereafter. Um, I think that that's usually is that. And it's not a hard and fast nine PM. Um, I'm looking at the conditions.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not like a um, a blanket decision for every farm, so each one is a little bit different, yeah.
Um, I know that that's one of the the pluses and minuses of that bylaw. Is that it does allow some um autonomy for each individual. Yeah, right here.
Um, could range from as early as daybreak to as late as ten PM.
Yep, yep.
This part right here, is that, is that the same thing?
This, yeah, this one says that the non-agricultural exempt uses listed under da-da-da shall be allowed Friday through Sunday. With the event ending no later than eleven PM.
Okay, so the seventh and the eighth were till eight officially, and then this one we just did was till seven, and you're looking for ten for both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make that clarification that the extension would be for the serving of the liquor. We have no purview to say you can continue if it is outside this, the site plan, but that sounds like it's all part of.
Like to make a motion to uh approve the request to extend hours uh for the one day liquor license. Decem- uh excuse me, October seventh and October eighth, two thousand twenty three, from eight to ten. And October twenty first and October twenty second from seven to ten PM.
And it's for Schultz Farm?
For Schultz Farm.
So we have a motion and a second, Tamika, that motion is, and Yvonne, that's what you need, right? The Schultz Farm extension from eight to ten on, on those. Just, it's a little confusing, so I just wanna make sure we're. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, Harry, roll call.
Second and I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
Galvin eye.
Whitman eye, thank you for coming in and providing the information.
Wanted to say thank you to Austin, Tamika, who's been very helpful and all of you guys. This is a very big learning curve for me, so thank you so much and I hope to work with you guys more in the future.
Definitely gonna try and make it up there this time.
And, and I wanted to extend my sorrow for the, the health concerns and everything that Brichette has been suffered, has suffered. So I know that that's been a, a struggle, so I'm sorry to hear of that closure as well as the, that it's health related, so.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Well wishes to, to everyone.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, Tamika, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Tamika.
Good job, Austin.
Have a good night, you guys.
Thank you.
You too.
We have a special election warrant to um. Sign the warrant for the, do we wanna sign the warrant first before setting the meeting?
Nope, this is for the special election, not for the town meeting, so this is a request of the town clerk.
Sorry, um, sorry guys, um, to sign the town, the warrant for the October tenth special election. This is to fill Senator Gobie's seat.
Yep, and the election is on November seventh.
Yes. So this is a request from the town clerk, um, because we're the ones that can post the, the warrants. So, um, we just need a motion to sign.
Make a motion to sign the warrant for the special election, oh, excuse me, the special election warrant for October tenth.
Oh, why did I, I'm so sorry, there's another election on November seventh, but obviously you're signing the one for October tenth, I'm sorry.
I think is October tenth the primary?
Myself, I'm sorry.
And we only need to sign for the October.
October tenth, I'm sorry, yes.
So this is the October tenth primary for?
November second, right.
Alright, we have a motion, is there a second? Motion and second, questions, comments, concerns? Roll call Harry.
Second and I.
Pardon me, Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
Galvin eye.
Whitman eye. Um, then we have in our packet a special town meeting calendar. So we um are looking to set the date, time and location, um, the proposed time. And I think um it's been confirmed that it works with um the school, the moderator. Um, I think FinCom?
We've notified them.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and I know this board, we've talked about that date um before, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so we have the date of November sixteenth at six, it's a Thursday, November sixteenth. At six PM at the Glenwood Elementary School.
That one? That'll be there, Harry.
So I would entertain a motion to um set the meeting and then open, do we need two separates to set the meeting?
That's in a separate, it's on the next page, yeah.
So it's just to set the date, time and location.
Alright, I make a motion to approve the special fall town meeting. Date of November sixteenth at six PM, Glenwood Elementary School in Rutland.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Yes, sir.
I was asked about the date, do you feel six o'clock is the most beneficial time where you don't anticipate a lot of things? And some people for this meeting or the events committee meeting had to come in after six thirty because they're not home from work. Did you take that into consideration of six instead of seven? I realize if it's expected to be a longer meeting, you may wanna consider seven PM instead of six PM. Because you gotta think, usually um FinCon and or the selectmen will meet before, so that's five thirty meet there. Could be challenging for some people.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak, historically, we've held it at six o'clock. We did talk about the considerations for a start time here with us, with us, it's not ideal for me. I work out of town and need to make it back. I also know that it's what it is and I make it so that I can be back in time, in time for that. I don't know how the board feels about um and Austin, what the warrant is tentatively looking like. Um, if, you know, I think sometimes we hit seven PM and people feel like it's too far after dinner. And then kids need to start getting ready for bed, we kinda felt like we were. No matter what, we were gonna hit a challenge, so I, I hear that Randy for sure. It's like I said, seven o'clock would be so much easier for me, um, but I also don't sleep and will be up all night, so.
Do we know how big the warrant is?
Right now, we have maybe four or five tentative articles for the warrant. Obviously, that's not including a potential citizen's petitions. It's also hard to tell, uh, two of them are zoning related changes. But uh we just had an annual town meeting that asked for two million dollars and that article was very quick. So it's hard to tell how long.
I mean, I've said there were twenty one, twenty three articles, you know, went till ten o'clock at night and thirty, so that's why I'm curious.
I, I would be surprised if we had. Yeah, if even that.
I feel like specials, in the past, we've had between like ten and fifteen, Randy, you might remember a little bit better. Um, a lot of it is the, the spending of free cash and if we're trying to, to push a little bit away from. Fall being the, the spending free for all and more cleanup. And anything that needs to happen between now and the annual, then um. I think we did get a request for the school to um put uh some language adjustments for the regional agreement.
Yes.
Um, I don't know, sometimes those have um discussion, I don't think that that one will, but I, it depends who shows up, to be honest.
Most of it is housekeeping, most of it is uncontroversial. On average, to my memory is you have that fifteen to eighteen warrant articles that usually is less than an hour. To two hours, I would suggest as a compromise, I do six thirty and then the selectmen can start at six. And you just.
And that works for you, I mean, you're the moderator, so one of the considerations is what works.
I'm still killing turkeys that day at six o'clock, but I will be there.
I know, that's why.
I'm just, I don't worry about maids.
Yeah, yeah, what's most accessible to you?
More people there because we go a half an hour or an hour later, I think you have more to gain.
Yep, I don't disagree.
Just my opinion.
I mean, Randy, through your, from your experience, do we have a lot of stragglers dragging in? Uh, I mean, after that?
I think it depends what's on the, the warrant, to be honest.
Yeah.
Special, pretty much everybody's um continually coming in thereafter. It's not like you get in line at quarter or six and there's a line for an hour typically at the special. Because there's not a lot of people there, you notice that more at the annual. But I think you see people come in for the next, I mean, there has people come in at the end of the last article. Because they thought they were gonna get there as soon as they can and they're getting there at the end. Is that normal? Not necessarily, you're talking about, but I mean, at best, you're talking fifty people. So if five people walk in for the last three articles, then you got ten percent of the people. And is that worthy of it? Who knows?
I was just gonna add, so just to Randy's point, I actually reached out to the town clerk's office. Cause the school was looking for an estimated number of people and last year's special town meeting, we had a hundred and ten people that attended. Just as a frame of reference.
Yeah, I think one of the bigger ones in my memory is um when the marijuana bylaw was on.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that was twenty some articles and I think we started at six. But that was again a, a known kind of bigger con, not controversial, but conversational piece. Um, so I, I'm.
I, I don't care anyway, it's up to you guys, what, I mean.
You guys have been starting at seven more recently, right?
Six fifteen.
Oh, six fifteen, okay.
Our chair has issues in getting there by six fifty.
Okay. So, is the board amenable to six thirty or even seven? I mean, if the moderator is okay with it, the school, I mean, I would assume.
I was saying, six or seven.
Right, we book it till we're done, right? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I have no problem with seven if it means we'll get more people there.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if we will, but if it helps, I have no problem with seven.
I don't have a issue with it.
Austin, do you have any?
I'll be there.
Yeah, we pay him extra overtime.
Alright, so then I guess if, if there's an amended piece to move it to seven or just amend the motion to move it to seven and amend the second?
Alright, uh, I'd like to amend my motion for six PM. Amend it to seven PM on November sixteenth at Glenwood Elementary School Rutland Special Fall Town Meeting.
Who seconded it? Do you amend your second for that? Are you okay with it going to seven?
Motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it your turn?
Any conversation, discussion, questions, Harry, roll call.
Second and I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
Galvin eye.
Whitman eye, and we'll see how it goes, thanks Randy for bringing it up, cause we just were trying to keep with historical. Thank you.
We'll be out of there.
What side?
I'll get you out of there still at the same time.
Um, moving in, we have the fall town meeting calendar, um, provided to us in the packet. We need to review the dates um and then vote to open the warrant. Um, so the, we just set the time, date and location, date, time and location, whatever. Um, and it's proposed that we would set the warrant to close on Friday, October thirteenth at noon, twelve PM. Um, and then that would give us Monday, the sixteenth as a board to begin review. Um, with uh, for us and they could get to FinCom to review and send to uh council for review. Um, and then on the thirtieth, we would sign the warrant. Um, so that we could post it by that Thursday, the second, to meet all of our posting requirements. The last day to register to vote, I don't think is November seventy sixth. I think it might be November, maybe November sixth. Um, and um, and then the Thursday, we would probably have a board meeting. That would start at six thirty um for select board, just to clean up any pieces or whatever. And then we would go into the seven o'clock, um, special town meeting. So I think what we really need is uh to have the vote to uh open the warrant tonight as of now. And that it would close on Friday, uh, November, or October thirteenth at noon. I would take that as a motion.
Just uh make a motion to open the warrant. For, what was the date?
Today.
Today, open the warrant today.
And close.
And close on Friday. Uh, thirteenth at twelve PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Tamika and Austin, you guys are here, but can you just make sure communication goes out to the boards and commissions and department heads? That it's such, and probably even reach out to the school, s- schools, just to make sure that they don't have anything else. We know we have the one request, but um I don't know if Bay Path has anything and I don't know if Wachusett has anything else. Cause I think we had missed some stuff that maybe they had wanted in the spring or something, so. We have a motion and a second, roll call Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
Galvin eye.
Whitman eye, thank you. Um, then we have the, set the date, time and location. For the special winter town meeting for the bylaw, which we had discussed. Um, we had received some communication today from the town clerk's office about concerns with that time. Um, the, the date and time being close to uh. The presidential primary um election. Um, and so. I'm just, I just wanna. We had proposed it to be a Thursday, February twenty ninth at six PM. Um, their concerns are that the.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
The poll pads, what they use, the iPads that they use to check people in. Would very possibly be required for early voting. And so they would not be available to be used at a town meeting at that time, which means manual check-ins.
So, and I guess my question, and I didn't have a chance to respond back to the town clerk, um, because the email just came in. Like midday, um, would be if. It would be possible to do manual check-in for the early voting. Because I don't know historically how early voting has been for the um presidential primaries. Um, but I, I understand that concern and also I. And also I think it's a struggle because if we push any later, the concern the concern this board, and I think the bylaw committee so uh ad hoc bylaw committee had concerns also was if we push farther into March, then we're running into sports starting up, but also getting closer to annual town meeting when select board and FinCom are quite in depth trying to get through um potentially trying to get through warrant stuff for the the annual town meeting. Um so I think that that was the concern of trying to hold it in that that time space after um uh February vacation, but before getting into, cause we were juggling the February vacation um concerns and just trying to give another couple weeks to allow for any last minute legal review or anything. Um the beginning of February feels a lot closer than the end of February in my mind, um and so that was this board's rationale.
Right, I I and I understand all that, um Anita and I have been exchanging emails and her latest suggestion is to push it out to the fourteenth. Um I think that we don't know that anything's available on the fourteenth and we don't. So I I hesitate to to, I would suggest you punt on this for one more meeting so we find out more about the fourteenth and the availability and maybe we'll get some more information about where the pole pads are required. Uh my my gut tells me that if they start early voting, then the pole pads will be either entirely with sorry, yeah, early voting would be entirely electronic or entirely manual, I don't think they would be able to switch back and forth, that doesn't sound like an overall good idea.
Right, and I guess my, I I guess that's a little bit of my question and I don't know how many pole pads there are and what the expense is. If it's even feasible to have additional pole pads or not, um but it seems like that's not an insurmountable piece to try to be mindful of all the other time constraints that we have, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Well, you know, I'm not gonna be there on the twenty ninth.
Right.
March sixteenth, I could be there, so, but that's just.
I just, if 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 I may, um speaking from a staff perspective, I I do understand that there is a a stress on the town clerk's office with elections, um but speaking from experience, the deeper we get into March and the budget season and town meeting, you figure now we're we're two months out from fall town meeting and we've already started the process. That's less than two months from what will likely be our annual town meeting and I just worry about the the ability for our staff to be able to execute everything we need related to that town meeting, the other town meeting, the budget process. I also don't know that there's a, I know Nick, um excuse me, Glenwood is completely out for the month of March. Um and and Naquag is is iffy, I was able to narrow it down to those two dates at Naquag, so um.
March is also the kickoff date for sports.
Yeah, it's just.
And it's a lot of travel teams, there's a lot of people that won't be around on weekends.
Yeah.
A lot of them, so, I mean, that's.
Well, yeah.
It just feels very, very tight and I know we had talked about this before at the meetings and tried to figure out the timings and you know, I had spoken with Randy and his availability for the twenty ninth, um so I'm just concerned at the what's gonna.
Ra- Randy, would you have, if we were to entertain the clerk's office request to push it out to March fourteenth, which is a Thursday, March fourteenth, two weeks from the twenty ninth, would you to the best of your knowledge, be available or?
Gotta milk that day, but yeah, I can. I I would suggest, I I can be available on the fourteenth as long as I'm given enough notice in advance. Is there any reason that we're not thinking about going the other direction in February? I realize we have February vacation, which I know you're concerned about people. For the lack of better terms, this isn't gonna be a fun meeting, right? Unless somebody really has a concern with it, you're going to likely, I've been wrong before, you are likely to have less meeting people at this particular February or March meeting than you are at the special town meeting because a lot of people don't understand it, right? They 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 and they're not gonna learn unless they have a problem or something, they're not gonna take the time to learn what Peter and others have spent countless hours on to think about it. And you've had an opportunity to vent your concerns before and it was always a compromise. To the best of my knowledge, there is nobody beating down the committee's door to say, hey, I really don't like what you're doing here and you should do it this way and they have an opportunity to change it, right? So you're gonna have very, very few people there. I know there would be an awful lot of opposite opposition, right? But I would run it on either the sad day before vacation or the sad day after school vacation, right? For the reason being, moving it up in the beginning of it, and I realize some people go away for that full ten days. But that percentage of people that are going to go away and actually come to the meeting is probably relatively small as a whole to do it. I would suggest staying in February, then going to March because of the legitimate concern of the timing of that and sports and there's a lot of things doing concern. I know we're trying to put it in there to put to bed, uh for lack of better terms, the the bylaws and whatever. You know, the 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 housekeeping things that most people don't understand, right? I mean, you could have it on New Year's Day if you want to, because you know, nobody's gonna work and do it then, could you have it during school vacation? For the lack of better, you can you have it during the day, I mean, we don't have the janitor at night at the school on a Thursday, right, is the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth is the Thursday.
Thursday, so you could have it virtually, you could have it during, you could have it at five o'clock where there's less, I mean, the kids have got it, the parents have gotta be home for the kiddos, right, the younger kiddos. You could have it at five o'clock where it gets darker earlier. You have the chance of a storm there in February too that hopefully none of us have that we can or cannot cancel. Which I realize that's the moderator's preview to do and we have considered in the past, but.
So your first recommendation was either the eighth or the fifteenth?
Yes. See, I do it close to Valentine's Day, you guys might love me that night if you get out of early.
No, you don't wanna do that.
I'll bring my way.
So I think originally we were looking at the second half of February just to give us a couple extra weeks for any final review or whatever for bylaws.
There's a lot of process left. That's our problem.
Um and then we were trying to be mindful that February vacation, the start of that is holiday and then the end of that is people coming back and either if they've traveled, coming back and trying to get everybody readjusted to start the week or um or whatever, so that's why we were trying to be mindful of it, I I know this board, I'm not sure I don't remember who's traveling during February vacation week, um
Don't know yet.
or not, but.
So so what does what does Anita consider too close to the election? Is it, is it the Thursday before?
I don't know when, off the top of my head, I don't know when early voting can start, the the presidential primary is March fifth. So um I don't know when, because the concern is early voting would be using iPads, um the pulling pads.
But I'm saying, can you run it up to the twenty seconds?
I don't know how.
Which is out of vacation, that only cuts Peter short for one week. If that got you out of early thing, that would accomplish Anita's task, not crunch him, uh Peter too much in committee and get you out of the, out of the um holiday week if you're concerned with that, the kids. Would be just a suggestion.
So yeah, Anita said, I think everything is assumptions based on previous, I know, so it could change. But early voting would probably probably be mandated for two weeks prior to the March fifth date, so that would mean the twenty seventh and the twentieth, so it'd likely have to start the nineteenth or twentieth if all the current assumptions, um.
Run on the eighteenth then. Run on the eighteenth so you can use the iPads. That's cutting Peter short, that's out of vacation and run on a Tuesday night instead of a Thursday night.
So I think Tuesday nights.
The eight- the eighteenth of February is a Sunday.
I think we were originally trying to avoid Mondays and we could do the off Mondays of our meetings, but trying to avoid Tuesdays because almost every Tuesday has either a conservation or a planning meeting um that are generally scheduled, that they need those meeting dates. Um so I think that that was the rationale for trying to avoid, I don't know off the top of my head what uh the off Tuesdays or Monday is for us in February.
Twelfth and the twenty sixth.
So the twenty sixth would be out because iPads would be in use, the twelfth would be school vacation week and that's actually a holiday, so we couldn't, isn't that?
The twelfth is the week before.
Okay, sorry then, so the nineteenth is the, I'm so confused.
Nineteenth is the holiday and the start of vacation week.
Okay.
That's the start of vacation week, nineteenth?
Well, it's the Monday of vacation week.
Does M T L um not allow paper check-ins for early voting? Does it, is it required to be electronic?
I can't tell you, I'm not, I'm not involved, I I not a
So it sounds like.
I'm not informed.
Let's maybe we need to do a little bit more questioning before, I mean, I I'm not eager to to change kind of, but I'm not opposed to it if we really can't work around.
I was just asking Austin about, just confirming early voting, if people have to go into the town hall, he did confirm that they have to stay open later. But if we have meeting at six o'clock and even if we extend it to a later seven P M start, I mean, how much, how many voters are we having coming in on that one day after six P M to do their early voting that it couldn't be done via manual check-in process?
Well, I don't know that their staff, they're gonna have to deal with a town meeting also. Because both the town clerk and the assistant town clerk are used in town meeting.
Does it have to be the town clerk that means at town hall or the election workers?
I don't know who does the election management, I I don't know enough about the process.
Maybe those are the questions we have to ask.
In in the past, in early voting, Benjamin Frost was brought in to do early voting when he was not an employee of it, so you can have an election worker come in. I think the concern that Peter brought up earlier is if you choose to use the iPad at the town meeting, which is a faster, easier process, I assume, right? You can set your meeting whenever you want and neither Anita can figure out what she can and cannot do with electronic pads for early voting slash the town meeting, which is more of an inconvenience. I would concur, for the little bit of knowledge that I don't have, is Peter would say if you start with electronic balloting, you have to go through, you can't change from that particular one day at six P M, we're pulling the iPads from you to bring it over there, I would assume would be the answer. So either you start with electronic early voting, which I believe there's probably statistics out there of how many early voters we've actually had, so you know, is it six or is it six hundred or you know, whatever, you you can you can do that, so.
I think the answer is that there have been more early voters than there will be at this at at this special town meeting.
You are correct, so what I'm saying is let Anita, if you guys wanna keep it on the twenty ninth, let Anita make a decision of, hey, we're gonna have a town meeting on the twenty ninth like you wanted to and let Anita make the decision of where she uses those tablets, is that the right word? Tablets for early voting, whether she does it for there or there, so. Again, we're not likely to have a lot of people there, so she's gotta check, manually check in fifty people, she can do it, you know?
Just, I mean, I can make the twenty second, I just can't make the twenty ninth, but if I don't make it, I think.
Are we in February, are we in February or March?
February.
February.
I think this board is very capable of handling all the bylaws for the town meeting.
You want it on the twenty ninth.
No, I'm just saying, yeah, it does become the twenty second, I'll be there, that's all.
Is electronic voting something new for the primary?
It's not electronic voting, it's just um check-in.
Check, it's check-in.
Early voting, I mean, yeah.
It's just check-in.
Yeah, no, that's that's been that way for a couple cycles now.
To- Tameka, I know you had asked for a number of dates from the schools, but I don't remember that you did the twenty second or even the twenty se- based on my, if two weeks hold.
I guess what Peter asked me to, which was February eighth, February twenty ninth, March seventh.
Right.
The dates that he asked me.
And based on if it's two weeks prior, the twenty second wouldn't even work because the pulling pads would still be in use on the twenty second. So that would be either earlier than that.
So you're talking.
I I really hesitate to do it vacation week because I
Yeah.
I don't wanna, people that are interested, I I agree with you, Randy, I think we're we're still gonna see fewer people at this, but I don't want to. The few people that would like to go that have plans to go away, I don't wanna take that opportunity away from them.
You don't think anybody's gonna not go away to come to the meeting and see us?
That can help, that can help.
Yeah.
Gotta find out if Lou's gonna be here.
Like I said, I'm kinda hesitant to move it through.
I think we should ask some questions, maybe clarify a few more things and.
So it looks like we could potentially do either the twelfth, February twelfth or fifteenth, that would be the Monday or the Thursday before vacation week. I don't think we can do the week of school vacation, cause I think that that still falls in the two weeks. Anita's email is, she has a few dates in there that I'm not one hundred percent sure. Due to the March fifth presidential primary, the March seventh date wouldn't be feasible, so March fifth is the presidential primary, which would be two weeks before, would be the twenty second or the twentieth, I'm sorry. Um so we would have to do either the February twelfth or fifteenth.
Anita, they have their luck.
Or she's proposing March fourteenth, which to me seems to get it clo- closer, farther out into the land of spring sports starting as well as more importantly, um annual town meeting prep for offices, department heads, everything.
I would rather try and push it up than push it out.
So Tameka, can you maybe inquire about, Randy, would you um February
Fifteenth.
twelfth and or fifteenth, it's Monday is the twelfth and the fifteenth is Thursday? Would you have availability if the school is available and if the board is amenable to switching? Um it sounds like our board is not so keen on pushing it farther out and beyond. Um.
Are you making him happy?
I think we can get our job done.
Are you gonna?
I'll I'll be fine, we'll make it.
I mean, I.
He he's doing the bull of the work, I don't wanna go up.
No, I know, and that was my concern with with pushing it out, but then we were very conscious about not pushing it so far in pushing it into the middle of March and beyond because of uh the work that offices need to do for annual town meeting prep.
I- as a practical matter, we're gonna be in the midst of the budget work before this town meeting whenever we hold it and it'll continue after the town meeting, so we're going to have overlapping
Right.
town meeting agendas, we're going to.
Right.
Even if they, even the meetings won't overlap, we're gonna have work for both at the same time, we're gonna have to manage all of that, okay?
So maybe we can ask, if if you don't mind, Tameka, we can hold off on setting this, ask about those two dates in February. I personally am hesitant to go beyond into March, um again spring sports schedules for anybody that's interested in attending, but also um you know, it's again pushing things.
Mm-hmm.
Um I don't know what the the other considerations are per Anita's email. There's other considerations beyond just the electronic pulling, so maybe we can follow up with that also.
So just a follow-up question, if those dates aren't available, where do we go from there? Because I I already know that the week, the eighth is not available because of sports at that school.
Right.
So if I ask, what's the alternative?
The other room, right?
Um.
You do the other room.
And and alternative is the other room, as long as we can be sure there won't be.
Ninety is the capacity.
I'm not.
What is it?
Ninety is the capacity in the Blair Room.
It would be an absolute miracle.
A- actually, I let's be sure of that, is that in fact the capacity by by the building inspector?
It's on the wall.
Oh, is it up to, okay, cause the last time I looked, it was the forty nine.
That was like, we could have it on the wall.
They had a lot more there for something different, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah.
But they were supposed to, if they had more people, it was supposed to be staffed with emergency personnel, I think. Yeah, 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 but I'm just saying, we could go beyond that and have it staffed by emergency personnel.
In the event, I'm not concerned with getting seventy people at this town meeting, quite frankly.
Right, if they are.
I'll be thirty.
They might surprise me.
If if they if they are, we'll be there.
Well, then if that's the case, do we just not involve the school at all?
Yeah, they will not go well.
And just do it in that building?
They're all gonna come in the same car, you say?
I mean, in some ways, it would be, it would be cheaper because we're not paying the custodial fees, right?
Yeah, I just feel bad, going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, cause I had already
Right.
You know, if if we're anticipating far less than what the Blair Room can hold, maybe we just keep it in-house because I'm concerned that then if that date doesn't work for a different office or, you know what I mean?
Right.
I just, I feel bad.
Yeah, I I understand. Yeah, I I understand. So is the board amenable to just keeping it here in-house then? And then we have hopefully a little bit more liberty as to scheduling, we just have to make sure that the library doesn't have something. I know sometimes there's some outside groups that use the space that book far out, but I don't think that this far out they would be.
They they generally, I, the library doesn't allow booking out this far out, to my knowledge.
I didn't think the library allowed anybody to use the space down here.
Oh, yeah.
Do they?
Oh, this room is is cables. The other two rooms are the libraries. They schedule that.
Oh, okay.
So I don't have any concerns.
No.
As as long as everybody's fairly confident that we will not exceed capacity.
We fit the marijuana moratorium, special town meeting in that room.
Okay. No, that was in Naquag.
No, the moratorium.
Oh, oh, the moratorium. I know there's been been some zoning bylaw stuff that has happened in there also. Alright, so we will not use the schools period
Okay.
and we will ask some additional questions um before setting the date and time, but Peter, it looks like it could potentially be pushed up earlier two weeks to that February, what have I said, twelfth and fifteenth?
Fif- twelfth, fifteenth, okay.
I don't know.
Are you going to speak to Anita or do you want our office to do?
I'll I'll talk to her.
I was gonna say, we can, maybe our office can respond also just as a consideration. Alright, so hopefully next meeting we will set, and Randy, as far as you you know, your availability is open on those days. Thank you. Uh we have a council on aging appointment, um Jessica Flattery, I'm going to not pronounce her name correctly and I apologize. Flattery um is looking for a three-year term appointment. Um we have a letter of interest as well as the chair's um recommendation.
Nice to see it was done properly.
Um
Well, could I just ask what what the role of this person is really? I mean, if she appointed tonight, what what does she do?
It's a board. The council on aging is a board and they work with
That determines what happens for that building and everything, okay.
Right. And yeah, not for the building, but they work with the director um just on different decisions as far as programming and offerings to the community.
Okay.
Um it's, looks like she has good background, um and like I said, she has the recommendation.
She did apologize. She was gonna try to attend today, but she had um a prior work committed because of the school um event tonight at Glenwood.
It's almost nine o'clock anyway. I would take a motion.
Make a motion to approve Je- the uh appointment of Jessica Flaherty to the Rutland Council on Aging Board. Council on Aging Board, right? Okay.
And it's for a three-year appointment, which term would be ending The motion and second, questions, comments, concerns? Harry, roll call.
Second eye.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger I.
Gavin I.
White man I. Um for future meetings, we have uh Monday, the twenty-fifth um next week for bylaw review and then we have regular scheduled meetings for October second, October sixteenth and October thirtieth.
Good lord.
Um and it's that.
We make a motion.
I would love a motion to adjourn. Don't leave though, 'cause we have a whole bunch of stuff to sign.
You made a motion second?
Yeah, yep.
Motion second, questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call Harry.
Second eye.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger I.
Gavin I.
White man I.